You did it. Okay, Allison, you could actually bring in Dave on doing my intro if you don't mind. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Camden Select Board meeting for May 18th, 2021. As you all know, we are, we are in a webinar format, an intro. If you want to join as an attendee to our meeting, the link is provided on our agenda, which is on the town website under the June. Sorry, the May 18th agenda, you can use the link or if you prefer to dial in their dialing instructions. And just again, as a, as a word of procedure, please feel free to ask questions and answers during the agenda items. If you desire, please use that as a format for communication only, so we can try to focus on one area and try to get your answer, questions answered. Before, well, before we get into the agenda, I wanted to start with a, well, kind of an announcement regarding the fact that we are in Maine's Arbor Week, this, this coming week, we started on Sunday, I believe. And we didn't want to go without recognizing that as we have in the past and doing numerous events. And not the least of which, and as a segue into introduction, this year in our budget discussions, which you all voters were voting on and on June 8th or before in absentee. We did include some items that were very exciting for their net zero effective trees. And Dave, you can describe that a lot better than I can, would you mind introducing what we, what we, we are implementing in this coming fiscal year?
Okay, Bob, thank you. So part of, part of our tree maintenance program has historically been a lot of pruning and taking down of older trees. And what we've been noticing is that, you know, we're beginning to have a net tree loss of the larger, more mature trees around town. And in an effort to kind of correct that, we're kind of committing to, to having a no net tree loss program where we budgeted extra money to not only replant some trees, but also grind the stump and the location of where a tree previously was or has been taken down. A lot of times, if you look and you see a space, you think, oh, there should be a tree there, there's probably a reason why the tree's not there. There could be some underground utilities or some wires. And really the place where the tree wants to be is where the stump is. And we haven't in the past been removing the stump, so you can go around town and you see a lot of these big old stumps and no tree. So that's part of what the commitment is. So we're going to be actually probably putting a layer in our GIS system and inventorying all these large older trees. And probably moving forward, trying to make an effort to grind the stump if one gets removed and placing another one in its place. But also then trying to go backwards and, and kind of replant some of the ones that were lost prior to this initiative. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Dave. That's, that's, that's great. Anybody else on the board want to make a comment about Arbor Week, Ms. McKellar?
So for people who may have a large stump from a town tree in their yard, can they just get in touch with you? Are we taking names and addresses at this point?
So I'm sure everybody, maybe, maybe one out of five people has a stump in their yard. So it's going to be almost impossible for us to get all of these done immediately. But yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, I like, maybe start a spreadsheet. I'll talk with Janice, we'll put something together and maybe on OneDrive where we can both share the same spreadsheet and kind of keep a running tally and we'll just start picking away at them a little at a time. And, you know, don't give up if your trees or your stump doesn't get ground in the first year, we'll, we'll slowly get to it. You know, we're trying to do this in between paving roads and, and, you know, some of the other initiatives we have going on in the town. So it's kind of something we haven't been doing and it's an add-on thing, so we're going to fit it in where we can. But I think we'll report back at the end of the budget year to see where we're at. And if we need to put more resources on it, if people want more of it done, then we'll do that.
Great. What about, what about for people that just want to have a tree planted?
Um, I think, I mean, we haven't really discussed that too much. I think that that's more falls under the, the shade tree program that the town has currently. And Janice is heading that up. And I think that, I don't know, probably Audra has a better handle on the number of trees we're planting this year, but we are planting quite a few trees this year through that program. So again, Janice is probably the contact for that.
Yep. So I mean, people can contact the town and get on a list and then we can decide whether their particular tree would fall under, you know, one program or, or the other.
Correct, correct. And I mean, there's also another component of this. We probably want to look at the ordinance to make some tweaks to it so that it discusses a little bit more about, you know, when a tree's taken down, a tree needs to be replaced back in that place.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Thank you very much and happy Arbor Week, everybody. With that, I want to make, before we start agenda, I want to make one correction to the agenda. And basically it's item three consent agenda, item A, which does the approval of the village green application for the Bay Chamber concerts. Understand that the director is coming to town this week and they're trying to make some final decisions about venues. And we have time, so we're not going to with the board's mission, I want to take that item off, the consent agenda off the agenda and table until the Bay Chamber gets back to us. With that, we will commence our agenda discussion, which is first, public input and non-agenda items. I don't think we have any, but okay. Item two, the approval of the select board meeting minutes for April 20, 2021. Are there any comments board, Mark?
Yes. I've looked at the minutes, they look pretty good, except that sometimes if you're using a previous a board minutes, it doesn't get previously erased because when you turn to page four, all of a sudden it says, set date for select board approval of FY 22 budget, April 20th will be the public hearing. I think there's some old information that's mixed in with the new information and maybe we should, maybe we should table it until it can be cleared up.
Is there a number, is there quite a bit of that, Mark?
Or is that just? Hard to tell, I, you know, going through it and I'm, now I'm not sure what's old and what's new, so.
If the board prefers to move to table, that's fine. Is that your, your suggested motion?
I, I see, I, I motion that we tabled the draft in the minutes till for our next meeting.
Second. Motion made in second discussion, roll call, Allison.
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
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 Hi, also five zero, thank you. Now to our consent agenda. Again, there are now one, two, six items on the consent agenda. And again, we've removed the first one. So we have on the consent agenda and I'm going to read them. First item is the approval of Bitler license renewals for Boynton McKay, Camden Cone, Camden Harbor Inn, Camden Hideaway Inn, Camden Mainstay Inn, Free Street Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, Harbor Inn. Hartstone, sorry. Camden, Camden Mainstate.
You missed Harbor Dogs.
I, I haven't got there yet. Free Street Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, Harbor Dogs, Hartstone Inn, local Camden, Lord Camden Inn, Norm Vega, Hoister River, Pine Growers, River Ducks, Ice Creams, Scott's Place, Swan House, The Lodge, Camden Hills and White Hall Inn. Second item would be the approval of following lodging establishment renewals, Camden Harbor Inn, Camden Hideaway Inn, Camden Mainstay Inn, Cedar Crest Inn, Free Street Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, Hartstone Inn, in the Camden Place, or Camden Inn, Norm Vega, Swan House, The Lodge, Camden Hills, White Hall Inn. Third item would be the designation of registrar of voters' office hours as regular business hours, of course, for the upcoming June 8th, 2021 annual term meeting. Fourth, counter signature of the annual meeting warrant for the five town community school district budget referendum. And, hold on a second, and MS AD 28 budget referendum. And five, the approval of Timothy Hall and Michael Eaton for a master drain layer licenses. And the fifth item would be the approval of parking on a public landing for businesses blooming by the Chamber of Commerce welcome reception for businesses in town. There are any objections to the items that I just read on the consent agenda?
No.
Allison, you have objection, objection?
I don't have an objection, so to speak, but more of an objection to the, the, I feel like the counter signature of the, of the school warrant. Typically that has been, you know, a discussion where Maria and, you know, school board members come in or we have it. We, we ask questions. I understand that we did that with the budget committee this year. But since a lot of it is really an introduction to them, we didn't get, and, and we weren't allowed to ask questions or speak at all during the budget committee meetings. And so we didn't really get to have a discussion about that. And in, in the future, I think there should still be a time when, when the select board gets to ask questions because sometimes we might.
Well, more precisely, I think the school board, as I always have, comes to, comes to select board and have a discussion about school budget and in parallel and duplication. But as far as this consent agenda, you don't, you don't have an objection, just I'm just making a clarification of what we should be doing with this.
Sure. And then I, I just have one other question about all the business. The Bitler licenses. Um, is this the same time, for, for some of those businesses, they also have a, a lease agreement? For, well, for instance, Harbor Dogs, um, that there have been a lot of questions coming up lately about, you know, the use of the public landing and which businesses can be there and how we decide. Is, is the lease agreement at a different time or?
Yes, yes, it is. But let's, let's keep that discussion, Allison, let's just, if there's no objection to these items, I'd like to to declare them all valid and then go to your discussion about now to the leases, a good question. Audrey, could you address that?
For Harbor Dogs, Dogs specifically?
Or any leases.
And also, you know, just some, I'm getting a little bit confused about the business agreements and the, at what point, like the parking agreements that businesses have to have also. Where, where is the opportunity to discuss some of those or at what stage do they get asked for that? I'm learning lately as new people start, try to start businesses, I'm learning about different parts of the process that don't necessarily show up in our select board packet. And so I'm finding that I'm really uninformed, basically. So I guess this is more a request at some point. Do you have a workshop about like starting a business in Camden and all the, you know, the different things that are, are required and maybe even whether it makes sense to ask people certain questions? Like, do we need to be asking everybody if they're citizen of the United States? Things like that feel a little strange and heavy-handed to me. So I, I basically have a lot of questions, maybe at some point it would be nice to have a workshop.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right, thank you. Those who adopted, we will move on to a public hearing, hearings for liquor licenses. Now, again, the, as I open the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to comment on the matters at hand to the select board. If anybody has any comments, they're, allow them to make them, address them to me, be courteous and et cetera, et cetera. Once that public portion discussion is over, we revert to decision-making by the board and no more public input would be accepted unless the select board member has a question. But before, given that, well, we have a full agenda, but more importantly, I don't believe we have, I don't see anybody raising their hand for a public input on this public hearing items on any one of the five liquor licenses. I, I don't see any of you, Allison.
Oh, no.
I, I looked, there's none. So given that, I would close the public hearing portion and the reverse, like for decision-making on these five licenses. We have, we can do this and we can do each one individually, or if the board prefers, we could take all five as a, as a capsule. Mark?
I'll make a motion, I'll read them all, all five off at once and make a motion that we approve them. Unless anybody has objections. A motion that we approve the applications for Camden Harbor Inn at 83 Bayview Street for a class one hotel liquor license. Application of Camden House of Pizza at 12 Mechanic Street for a class three wine and class, class four malt license. Application of Hartstone Inn at 41 Elm Street for a class one hotel liquor license. Application of Mixed Greens at 15 Main Street for a class three wine and class four malt liquor license. And application of the Norm Vega Inn at 63 High Street for a class five bed and breakfast liquor license. Oh, there's, there's another one, there's.
Yeah, there's, there's five more.
Yeah, sorry, I'll keep reading. My application of Quarry Hill at 30 Community Drive for a class one restaurant liquor license. Application of Spooner Appel Door at 18 Bayview Landing for a class one public service liquor license. Application of Sea Dog Brew Pub Camden for class A Restaurant Lounge Liquor License. Application of Oscar Verest, DBA Camden Harbor Inn at 83 Bayview Street for a special amusement permit. And approval of request for extension of an on-premise liquor license for Wolf Peach at 50 Elm Street.
Second.
Motion made the second discussion from anybody not hearing any roll call vote, Jenna?
Hi.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Oh, I also, thank you very much. Moving on to the action items on our agenda, the first action that we have is approval of snowball surplus expenditures. Audrey, do you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, you know, one item that the select board has talked to me a lot about and, you know, sort of raised as something that's, you know, a strong desire within the community is wanting to bring tubing back to the snowball. Unfortunately, after the redevelopment, tubing was one thing that wasn't really planned for. And the, you know, beginner lift was placed in the location where the tubing hill was once located. However, this was, this has proven to be a really poor location for that as the conveyor lift constantly has problems with it, particularly towards the end of the season. So Beth Ward and apologies to Beth if she's in the meeting.
I don't see.
I can explain all this, but anyway, Beth Ward reached out to a master electrician about what would be necessary for moving the beginner left lift to the bottom of Spinnaker and then re-establishing tubing in that location. So in her memo, it sort of details that this is looking like it would be about a $50,000 endeavor. And given that we currently have about 120,000 in surplus revenue from this season and all the problems that we're having with the beginner lift in its current location, we thought that it was a good opportunity to sort of address the problem with the beginner lift and also bring back tubing. So the, you know, proposal is that, you know, would we'd use those funds outlined in the memo that Beth sent for the different elements that would be needed to move the beginner lift and sort of re-establish tubing in that location.
I guess my question is in her memo, what's the total cost of moving this? This, I see 50,000 and I see 8,000, 5,000, et cetera, et cetera. What's the total cost?
50,000.
Well, that's total.
Yes. Yep.
Um, and Beth, did just join us.
I just want to be clear that the sheds that she's, with the carpet lift, for the tubing hill, 8,070 is, is included in the 50,000 that you're saying.
So I'll let Beth answer that because I wasn't certain if, um, that would be part of that or if they've already been purchased with funding from other budget lines.
Well, her memo says.
Well, that's why, let's just let her answer the question.
All right, all right, sorry. I thought she was missing.
She's, yeah, she made it in.
Oh. I'm on my phone, I can't get it to work on my, my laptop for tonight for some reason. So to answer your question, all of these things that we are requesting for, to make the move for the tubing hill and the conveyor lift comes to just about 46,000 and I figured there'd probably be a few other bills in terms of just, you know, small supplies that we need to make it all happen. But all of that comes, you know, is, we have spent the eight, $8,070 to buy the, we wanted to get the buildings moving, so we've already spent that. And then the 21,300 from Ron Hartford was his estimate, estimate to do the electrical work. So, yeah, I, I, I may have missed one or two of your questions, but.
Well, you got them.
Okay.
There's just two really, I just wanted to, as I read the memo, it said $50,000, I got that. I didn't know if that encompassed the 8,000, the 5, 5,700, the 9,500 and the 21,000. The question, second question I had, was this amount of electrical work bid out?
It was not. We asked him for an estimate. I mean, we, we can certainly bid it out. Uh, that's what he estimated doing the project for us.
So you're just budgeting at this point in time?
Yeah, exactly.
Board, other comments?
Yes. One, this is an exceptional thing to do, bringing the tubing hill back is, is, I've heard more comments about that to me on the boards as I've been on the board than just about anything else. And not only is it coming back, it's coming back with the old Mighty Might, the, the lift, the lift that they used to use or the rope tow that they used to use for the beginners hill to help people pull people in their minotubes up the hill. So it'll be more available for people that were having a hard time climbing the hill. So it'll be available for more people, easier to use. And, you know, and observing some of the other places around Maine that have tubing hills, it's, it will bring in a considerable amount of money. It will be, it will pay for itself. So this is, we're spending the money now, but we will make it back. It will be incredibly popular. I'm very excited that we're getting this done.
Allison?
Um, I also am overjoyed. I couldn't believe that. It was just one of those things I thought we're just going to keep talking about it forever and ever and it won't happen. And then it just, we made it happen and it seemed like the most logical way. Um, I am curious, I assume with every decision or every change, there's always like some drawback or some negative. What should, what, what have you considered and what are there things that we should anticipate hearing from people that? Is there an, an anti group here or?
I, I have not heard anything. I think everyone that's been involved in, in the decision-making so far has been pretty joyed. It's, I think it's going to work out well for both the beginner area and to have tubing back at the mountain.
Okay, great. Seems too, too easy, but, um.
Just a, just a general procedural comment, there are $26,000, it's already been purchased here. More than half the amount, your question, what, where would this have come from if the board rejected this idea?
I guess we'd have to sell the, um, the sheds back and, um, and we would return this, the stuff that we, we bought for the expo, the UV exposure for the conveyor lift and the, um, the, the inflatable bumper. Oh, am I, am I?
No, no, you're, you're good on your feet. You move quickly.
So do we have that level of authority here? So right now we would be spending it from the reserve, from the surplus and that is something that the select board has control over, but all of your general budgets, you can move things around as you wish, right?
I mean. Uh, I believe whatever there is left in the surplus, I have to ask the board to put it into a reserve. Uh, unless we spend it.
But the other, but you know, you could have spent from somewhere else or.
Yeah, true. This is more of one of those things where, um, you know, we knew, we knew it was of interest to the board. Maybe we don't technically need to ask you for, you know, the authorization to do this. But given that it's a, it's a big expense and it's a big change, we just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it and supportive of it.
Well, I think it is especially important to communicate it because remember we have $50,000 of taxpayer money in the general fund right now, which was accrued for, we call it a rainy day, literally, and no snow. We have that in the other, in the general fund. In addition, if we approve this 50, we have in the order of 70,000, which I believe should be in a restricted reserve fund. Because that's, you know, all these monies were in, are an opportunity to, as we hit a bad year, sometimes to reduce the impact on taxpayers. So that's, that's philosophically related in the way I see it, but I appreciate the coming to the board because it is a big chunk of change.
Right, and also, it's not.
I'm not, this board has discussed many times about wanting to go, that's not in question.
Right. And, and you know, it's, this doesn't happen in isolation from other things that we need to ask you about, like the, you know, the site law permitting and the duck truck.
Understood.
All that stuff, so.
Well, do you really need a motion from the board here?
I mean, I would, I would like it, I mean, it's a good opportunity for everybody to show their support for something that the community's asked you for and you've all come to us, both Beth and I separately and together, asking for us to figure this out.
Like, if I turned to the board and requested motion, I would suggest, if the board agrees, of course, that we would approve the $50,000 budget number, but we should probably bid out the electrical. That's just a suggestion to the board.
I will make a motion, I will gladly make a motion to approve the $50,000 budget for a new tubing hill and relocating the, uh, the learning hill and, and that prove it for a $50,000 budget and that the electrical be bid out.
I will second that motion.
Motion made in the second, any discussion? Not hearing any roll call, Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah.
You look good on the phone, too.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the discussion, or not, actually, I'm actually regarding the transition of the Ragged Mountain Recreation Area at the Snowball for site law permitting. Audrey, maybe you could explain this a little bit, or if you want to bring Jeremy on, you're certainly welcome to do so.
So I'll, I'll summarize and we can bring Jeremy on in case you have any specific questions. You know, site location development act or why this is an important thing to do. But I guess, you know, long story short, um, you know, if you develop over a certain amount of acreage on, on any given parcel, you know, it gets to, or you have a, a certain amount of, um, you know, developed land of the parcel, um, you know, it triggers site law permitting. And, you know, there's, the staff have done a lot of research to try to kind of go back and figure out when, when might we have, you know, triggered this at the snowball, if we have at all? Um, and it looks like we've been right up against the line for quite some time and sort of given some of the, you know, things that have been discussed recently, particularly with the improvement of the, the trail system. You know, a good example being the Round the Mountain Trail and that partnership with the, um, the land trust. Now is a, a good time for us to sort of look at site law permitting so that, you know, moving forward, we, we have those issues addressed. You know, we have a permit in place and it's really clear, um, you know, as to what the requirements are around that. Um, and this is something that, you know, we've been right up against for, for so long. And I think that, um, you know, we're kind of at a stage where it, it really needs to be done and it's in the best interest of the town. And, and it's in the best interest of the, you know, the, the property and the environment there.
Um, go ahead, Jeremy.
Um, yeah, Audrey summed it very well on the site law permitting. I just want to remind you, and I included in the memo, hope you all read that. Um, we also have a stormwater permit on the property. And that was after, after the fact stormwater permit that we received, changes that we make to that site will trigger the stormwater permit and the need to modify that permit. So I, I just wanted to clarify that. I I just wanted to clarify that, because it is stormwater as well. Once we do site law, our stormwater permit would go away because stormwater is rolled into site law. Stormwater does require some things as does site law, particularly maintenance and recertification of our stormwater infrastructure, Alison knows, and we have two stormwater treatment beds near the, that drain, the parking lot, those are required to be recertified every so many years, and we are up to do that, so as part of this, I would recommend that we include that recertification in this process.
Is is that included in the dollars we're talking about here?
Frankly, if you look at the proposal that is included, that was for the site law permit only, and so what I would recommend is, really, we need to figure out exactly where we are and what we want to plan for. So I think what we should do is spend a little bit of money to assess where we are, and then when we're talking about these changes to the trail systems, the tubing hill, the potential lodge relocate or redo, all those things, those should be included in the site law permit that we present to the DEP. And so if there are some minor things that need to happen in the interim, we could just try to do that with a modification of our stormwater permit. We're getting to that point, because as Audrey said, we've been up to that line. It's twenty acres or more of developed area and what they, and that's post nineteen seventy. Most of Snowball was done prior to nineteen seventy. We're at about eighteen acres or so. And then, then there's the, the site law triggers three acres of impervious since nineteen seventy five, and that's more challenging to calculate right now. But we're gonna figure that out as part of this process, Bob.
Yes, I understood, just to the clarification, not a question really, general question. This proposal to do the site law of thirty one thousand eight hundred, what is the schedule that that would time period it would take to implement that work and to get to a, an end game?
To be honest, it's a lengthy process because there's lots of notifications that happen, there's a lot of lot of engineering that has to happen, we have to reach out to different agencies, the Historic Preservation Commission, Natural Areas Program, all those types of things need to review site law. I mean, at least chime in, and there's a lot of public comment period on it. So I would suggest that probably we're out from a site law permit six months.
At least that.
Right, yep.
Okay, board questions, Alison.
Definitely supportive of doing this, and thank you, Jeremy, for, sure, this is a lot of work. Definitely need to be doing things right and not just like hodgepodgeing it together, we've done that for too long. So it sounds like this is definitely good and necessary, I'm just trying to understand, where does this like take us to, is it, is this the kind of thing that we in order to complete it, we need to know what we, exactly what we want to do in the future, or?
Good question.
You know, how much can be, how much, I I'm just be a little bit worried about doing all this and being like ta-da, and then we want to do something different and our work is lost?
Perfect, great question, and that would have been a really good question a number of years ago, because you'd have to think about it, but the legislature changed the rules and the DEP did, so you can now get your permit. And you can make certain types of changes on the fly, as long as you're staying within their standards, and then you have to re-permit it within a ten year period. So the states kind of come up with some flexibility, which was frankly, very needed, I mean, I dealt with site law permits, probably thirty of them in the city of Bangor when I was there, and they're very complicated permitting, and generally, anytime you make any change, even adding a square foot of new impervious on a site, that technically would trigger a modification, and now you can do those things as long as you bring it back to get permitted, for the most part, kind of after the fact, it's a provision that the state has, and it's frankly a good one, and it allows some flexibility in the development.
And I I think particularly for like the trails, you know, the development of a network of trails, it's gonna be really helpful for that, and it'll be, we'll have the flexibility we need to, you know, make some changes.
For sure.
Future buildings, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm sort of want, I'm a little confused. So does that, because right now, we're kind of, people are sort of making trails, it's like just kind of happening a little bit, we, there's some process, it all seems to sort of be working okay. But if we want to do much more, or really anymore, we're gonna have to go, at some point, somebody's gonna tell, like, the DEP is gonna tell us, hey, you need to have done this, gone through this process.
Yep, no question, and and I would add that those people that are building trails, I mean, there may be some rogue trail builders on the mountain as there is on lots of public land. But any entity that is building and working on trails, we have been, I've walked the site with Beth, engineers, DEP, and so we're all kind of know what lane we need to be in and what they can be expanding, what they can't, and right now, we're kind of on a hold on some trail work until we resolve some of this and and get this through the process, so we're trying to do the right thing. And I think the people, the folks that are out there building trails and kind of partners with us are, understand that and they're appreciative because they, you know, respect the permitting process and the environment as much as the town does, at least I.
Right.
So what you're really looking for is a control of the sender's proposals of thirty, we need to accomplish this task over the next time period, whatever it takes.
Yep.
Plus the storm, is that, that includes a stormwater or doesn't?
There is a stormwater component in it, Jeremy.
There is a stormwater component in there, and I to be honest, I I think what we need to do is kind of of that thirty, and I talked with Jeff a little bit about it, that really, before we get into the actual site law permitting, we need to see what we're up against and and where we are, and there's a little bit of research and background work that needs to happen, and that's you know, Jeff understands that, and I I think he's including it in in this, in this.
Yeah, ten thousand six hundred dollars is for the pre-application meeting and et cetera for the stormwater issue.
Yeah.
Out of the thirty one thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
And so does that include like making sure that our, that the parking lot drainage is, and stormwater detention is working as supposed to?
No, we, I, we did not include that in that, Alison, so that will have to be, we'll have to figure that price out separately. That's not included in that.
It's the, and you said we're right up at the ten years of?
Oh, yeah, we're right up, we need to get our our stormwater systems recertified, we do. I can certainly get a price to do that and bring that back to you next meeting, or you can just I don't think it'll be a whole heck of a lot, they just got to see what's out there, inspect it and see that it's been maintained somewhat. We have dealt with that, that grade issue, so water is now at least getting into those ponds.
It did seem like there was a little bit of speculation and uncertainty with that last
Understand.
episode, it would be good for everybody to really understand, this is how it works, and this is.
We should parallel, get it, in in near term, get some proposals on doing that, we shouldn't delay that.
That's fine, will do.
I have a question, and it it may not be able to answer either Audrey or Jeremy. A number of years ago, we were discussing improving the trails there, and at some point, improving the the triple lift for bicycle lift in the summer. Has any of this been discussed as part of this discussion? I don't, I don't know that it's come up in a number of years, but something maybe we should discuss again as we're starting to make changes and we've got trails up there and we're talking about a new lodge at some point.
Yep.
Well, I would just say that, you know, any, any sort of new trails or the improvement of it, like significant improvement of existing trails, you know, by having a site law permit for the Snowball, it's just gonna make all of that much, much easier.
Okay, right, so that will assist if we move forward with that.
Any last comments before I move to motion, Alison?
Are we asking to fund this from the surplus also, or from somewhere else in the town budget?
Good question.
I would say not the Snowball surplus, but either the select board contingency or the professional services line. And we'll have ample funding in both to cover the cost of this.
Professional services line right now, you know?
Oh, I don't off the top of my head, I knew you were gonna ask me that question.
Do we need a decision tonight on where that is gonna come from? Because it would be nice to look at, I was hoping on our, maybe our June first meeting, we can look at the select board contingency and
Why don't we?
where we are.
We do this, why don't we approve the, the, the work and we'll clarify in the actual allocation in the budget on the June first meeting?
Right, and that's more than fine, like, I honestly don't need a decision on where the funding's coming from until the bills start coming in, so it's, you know, it's not gonna happen anytime soon, so.
But we should do it with this select, I think, yes.
Well, we got June first, Alison, I think it's a good idea that we can, Audrey can clarify for us, I'll take a note here to make sure it's on the June first agenda. And I get a motion for approval of the thirty one thousand eight hundred for senders.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve thirty one thousand dollars for senders.
Eight mark, thirty one eight.
Thirty, thirty one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Motion made in the second discussion, roll call, Jenna.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Alison.
Aye.
And Mark.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you.
Is this an opportunity to mention something else that might be funded by the Snowball surplus or to ask a question, or? Are we done with proposed?
Why don't we bring it up, why don't we bring it up in discussion, because we know we revisit it next on June first also, okay? That's fine, let's just bring it up in discussion, let's try to get through our agenda or action items first, if you don't mind. Next would be the approval of a purchase and lease for a Parks and Rec truck.
All right, so I will, I'll give you the background to this. So Parks and Recreation had a one ton dump truck that the engine died actually right in front of me. I've never seen a vehicle admit so much exhaust, I was actually on the phone with Alison and had to hang up right away because it was so shocking to see a vehicle fail in such a spectacular way in such a public area of town, so the truck there, I I think it's, it's had a lot of work done on it in the past few years, and it's just at a point where it can no longer be saved, and you know, they really can't borrow vehicles from any of the other fleets that we have within town to be able to perform a lot of the tasks that they have, this, you know, one ton dump truck was really pretty important to them and just the routine, you know, operations of Parks and Rec staff, so you know, given that this happened sort of after the budget process, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to look for, you know, different ways this could be done and not have a major financial impact and you know, Jody's come up with a really good suggestion for it, and I guess to add another layer of complication to all of this, if any of you have, you know, kind of had to buy a car or do anything like that recently, everything's in very short supply because of supply chain issues. So, you know, there are very few of them left, and we were pretty fortunate to find a truck that was available that's, you know, has a a dump body and is loaded with a plow, because that's another, you know, important function of this particular vehicle, it plows the Snowball parking lot in the winter, and then in all other seasons, it's used to do sort of the normal routine Parks and Rec work, like moving brush and picking up trash and and those sort of, and, you know, carrying around tools and other equipment, so it's, it's a pretty important vehicle for their fleet. So they found, they found one that had, you know, all of the, you know, sort of preset up with all of the features that they needed, it's for a really good price, you know, fifty four thousand three seventy three. We actually reached out to the, the dealer who came in with the lowest bid for the Public Works dump trucks, and they couldn't, you know, we, we thought because we're already, you know, we have two vehicles that we're purchasing from them, maybe they can you know, do us a deal if we were to purchase a third one through them, and they couldn't come up with a better price than the one from O'Connor that is in your packet. So the idea would be that we would purchase this vehicle, we would use the fifty thousand that's currently in the general fund Snowball reserve, and then come July of twenty twenty two, would replenish those funds with a lease purchase agreement through Andrew Scoggan Bank, and my apologies, I accidentally included in your packet the GM Financial Lease Purchase Agreement, so that is not that is not what we would use, we would use an Andrew Scoggan Bank's lease purchase agreement, and the terms of that are an interest rate of two point five one percent for eight years. That would be a payment of about seven thousand five hundred eighty six dollars and ninety eight cents per year. And so, like I said before, we'll initially pay for this vehicle upfront through that reserve, and then in the following financial year, FY twenty two, we'll pay that money back to that reserve through this lease, lease purchase agreement.
Yeah, why can't you be, why can't you do the lease now?
Well, I mean, we, we could, because lease purchase agreements don't need approval through the legislative body, that is something that the select board could do.
Well, I guess my question is, you're talking about a lay of fifty four thousand dollars right now, and then that will be replenished by the, the loan, basically, for the lease for eight years after that?
It's more of, it's more of, if we pay out of the reserve, we can do it immediately.
Okay. Just a little further, is the seven thousand seven six hundred rounded off per year, is that all? Is that our share, are other entities, entities contributing to this cost?
Well, yes, good question, Bob, so because this dump truck is jointly used by the Snowball, Parks and Rec, as well as the work that Parks and Rec does on behalf of the Cemetery Association, the idea is that the cost of replenishing that fund and paying for the lease purchase would be split three ways between those entities.
I see, so roughly twenty five million dollars, or whatever the number is, would be each one, now, to the, to the, that's to the lease, but to the fifty four thousand upfront, is that same deal?
Sorry, what was the last thing?
Fifty four thousand that we're gonna be funding now to buy this truck and then replenishing when the loan comes out, are the other entities contributing in that purchase also?
No, that would just come out of that one account, and that's a much cleaner, easier way.
Public, I just want to clarify that, just so everybody understands what what these elements are, and now the other last financial question is, eight years sounds absolutely long for depreciation of a vehicle.
Yeah. I mean, well, I I do think that that will be over the life of that vehicle.
It's definitely, definitely. Okay.
And that's, I mean, it's, some, some municipalities do that, you know, they finance the purchase of every vehicle or equipment, I mean, we don't, we don't typically, like with police cruisers, we buy them outright when we purchase them. Oh, and I, I just also, I want to clarify something, so two thirds of the cost of paying back the, the lease purchase agreement would come out of, you know, like a CIP that we would do for the lease of this vehicle, and then the other third would come from the Snowball, and then there would have to be some other arrangement between us and the Cemetery Association.
And and the fifty four thousand initially, you said it, and I didn't, went right, went around the other, was, is coming from what fund temporarily?
So in the general fund, we have a reserve for the Snowball, and there's currently fifty thousand in that, so we would spend it a little bit into the red.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, I missed that subtle point. Okay, other questions from the board, Alison?
Has this been discussed with the Cemetery Association?
That's, well, that's one thing that we would have to talk to them about, is, you know, funding the cost of, of a portion of this.
So I think we shouldn't I don't know, I mean, as the liaison to that committee, I think there's gonna be some
Pushback.
Some pushback, because the, the number that we give them for, you know, the cost of performing the services doesn't say you're gonna have to pay this, and if our truck breaks, you're gonna pay, I mean, we might be able to work something out, but unless we're gonna do that also with, doesn't the truck it use for the library, too, and I think the expectation is that when we're giving a, a price for services that we're building in the cost of equipment and all of that, I don't know, it just seems.
I'm happy to not overcomplicate it and just say, two thirds town CIP, one third Snowball.
I mean, if it turns out that we need to spend, say, next year, okay, Cemetery Association, our operating costs have gone up, so we're gonna, there's gonna be
Yeah.
a higher cost, that seems to make more sense to me than to try to get into arguing about whether they have one third of the track or one eighth.
Okay, so.
But also, does the truck have a? But also, um, does the truck have a plow?
Yes.
Yes.
Part of this price.
Does that mean that they're going to do? I've noticed a really none of our town, very few of our town parks are plowed during the winter. I know that has to be kind of a low priority, but, um, I've gotten a lot of comments about like Barrett's Cove, for instance. And would the idea be that they're going to do a little bit more plowing or?
I mean, we could, we could certainly, we could certainly do that.
But, um, what I hear you saying, Audrey, is that you're probably right going in, we should, uh, if we're, if we're going to approve this, it should be two thirds CIP and one third Snowball. Because we can't commit to cut the Cemetery, um, Association to this at this meeting. Right?
Yes.
Mark, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, you, you answered the question that, uh, Bob and I have been knocking back with. Why are we having, uh, one, one vehicle from one when, you know, a combined effort would be, uh, would make sense to, to try and do some, some big purchasing. But it makes sense because, uh, I think we've all heard that, uh, because as you mentioned, the supply chain vehicles are in rare demand. So it's good that we found that the truck found the deal. And looking at the, uh, the bank, uh, financing that you did include, it's a substantial, uh, savings from the one that we are going with. So that's.
Well, remember, uh, part of that reason, Mark, is because we went from, going from a five-year lease to an eight-year lease. That's one of the major differences between the two Andrew Scoggins and.
But the interest rate is so much lower.
Absolutely. It's, it's almost half.
Yeah, almost half. So if you're, if you're ready, I'll make a motion that we approved, uh, was it fifty four thousand three hundred and seventy three dollars for purchase of a new truck for, um, Snowball, uh, Parks and Rec?
We should also add that, um, uh, that'll be the, to the, to purchase, right? But that the loan will come in to replenish that in, in fiscal twenty three.
As so noted.
Right?
And, uh, yeah, uh, if you could include that it would come from the Snowball Reserve and the General Fund, that would be much appreciated.
Two thirds in general fund, one third in Snowball. And, and that the, this fifty four thousand dollar outlay initially, I'm sorry, you said the initial, the initially, the fifty four thousand is getting complicated, Mark, sorry. Fifty four thousand is going to come out of the general fund temporarily to buy the truck. And then in one year from, in July of two thousand twenty two, we will invoke this loan for, um, seven thousand five hundred eighty six dollars to be split, two thirds, one third, two thirds CIP, one third Snowball.
So noted, Bob, but don't apologize to me. Apologize to Caitlin, who has to type all this stuff up.
Caitlin needs help. Give me a call. Um, so we have the motion on the table. Do I have a second? I heard Taylor first. Um, discussion, roll call, Jenna?
Aye.
Allison.
You're on mute, Allison.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Aye.
Taylor, did I hit you? I forgot.
Aye.
I also five zero. Thank you very much. And onward and upward to another truck, the Public Works. So you might want to bring Dave St. Laurent in if you would like, um, on, on draw.
Yes.
And if you want to start, I'll let Dave just handle it. It's your call.
There he is.
Unmute, Dave.
Hello.
Hello. Go for it.
Okay, um. So a while back, we, uh, we're going to purchase one, um, uh, foil drive, larger plow truck for replacement of a truck that had some difficulties two years ago. Um, this was kind of a little bit before I got hired and, um, right before I got hired, they put a little bit of money into that truck. And after looking at the fleet and, um, assessing what we had for needs, uh, we determined that, you know, the truck that we had put some money into was, you know, probably worth keeping and continuing, uh, to be using for some of the outer routes. But we had more of a need for, um, some smaller sized trucks for the, uh, in-town routes. So, um, I was trying to, you know, research this and looking at the model that Rockport's using, Steve Beveridge actually instituted in it. What they're doing is using smaller trucks that are a little bit more nimble. They don't require a CDL license, so it kind of diversifies the people that can use them. And, um, you know, they have a lower impact on the, uh, town, in-town, uh, a lot easier to drive. And they're a lot less money and you can also use them throughout the season. So you can use them in the wintertime for plowing. But then you take the plow, the plow gear off and then you still have the dumping capability and the, the use of it for construction. Part of the way our fleet was structured was more of, you know, all right, we have summer trucks and winter trucks. And what I'm trying to do is narrow the fleet down to less trucks that get used throughout the season. Um, from, you know, wintertime into summer. Um, when you put a truck away and it doesn't get used, it's probably worse than actually running the truck constantly. You know, an idle truck is not good. So, that being said, we kind of retooled what we were going to, you know, purchase for trucks. And we put out the bid, uh, two of the five fifty series Fords, fully, uh, equipped with plow, plow gear wing and, um, Sanders with, and behold, they came in, two truck came in below the one that we were actually, um, thinking of purchasing two and a half years ago. Um, and then by just chance, when we went out to bid, we had one bidder who came back with a really aggressive bid, who had two of the red trucks that we needed. And that was the only bids that we actually got. Um, checking with Rockport though, they were right in line with what they had paid for theirs. So, um, it all, it all kind of worked out pretty well, I think. And, um, the total cost, I believe, for those, uh, let's see here, came in at, uh, two fourteen, one ninety eight, fully equipped. And then, um, CIP, I believe, was for two twenty, um, or two twenty five. I, I'd have to double check. Uh, maybe Audrey knows that better than me. So that's pretty much it.
But what you're looking for here is a purchase, just we understand, a purchase of a truck, one twelve ninety nine, is that correct?
For two trucks.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Same dealer, of course.
Same dealer from the same, yeah, Stonem Ford, two trucks, fully equipped, um, as opposed to one truck.
Yep.
Um, we're trading in two of the other older trucks. One that is no longer will take a sticker and another one that is, um, kind of a hybrid. It was purchased and then a front end was put on it and then parts are more difficult to purchase. So, um, you know, I think this is the right move in terms of what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah. And is the CIP, Audrey, in this year's budget or next year's?
No, it was, uh, two years ago and it was for two hundred and twenty thousand.
I think you said that already. Okay, question is board.
Total cost I have, looking at the numbers, is one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars, is that correct? That the final cost seen in the paperwork here?
Uh, no, two, two fourteen, one ninety eight with the gear.
One twelve, one hundred and twelve thousand ninety nine dollars each.
Each times two.
Okay, this, because in one of the, one of the paperwork here, there's, it says the, uh, total is one fifteen nine eighty eight for one of them, net due.
It's the, it's the document that has Audrey's signature on it.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the equipment. So take the one twelve oh ninety nine, multiply it by two and then add the one fifteen nine eighty eight. And that's two fourteen.
No.
Sorry.
It's two, if it's, that's, if it's double one twelve, that's two twenty four.
So, so the truck is fifty four one oh five.
Yeah, sorry.
I was going to say that, that one fifteen has to already be plowed into the one twelve.
Right. And that's times two.
Right, because it's for the, it's for the, uh, the, the ads, as I read, the spreader dumped, blah, 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 blah.
That's one oh two ten.
But, but the bottom line is we're being asked to approve one hundred and twelve thousand ninety nine dollars times two.
Correct, which, which after the trade-in of the two, the one truck that no longer takes a sticker and the other two thousand three, brings it to two fourteen, one ninety eight.
Fourteen, one ninety eight. All right, so we do have a, have a trade-in, but same, same truck company?
Same truck company.
Two fourteen, one ninety eight?
Two fourteen, one ninety eight.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, two hundred thousand, two hundred, two hundred fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety eight dollars for the purchase of two, uh, two trucks from.
Stoner Motors.
Stonem, Stonem Motor Company in Stonemaus.
So, or second, I heard you again. Um, hey, discussion, board.
Bob, if I, if I may, Dave, I just want to commend you. I like your approach to things. I'm a little bit of a car fan. I worked at the Transportation Museum and I agree with you, sitting is the worst thing for a vehicle. And I think, you know, purchasing smarter, more, uh, diverse vehicles is, is a strategy that I admire. So, thank you.
Yeah, it, I mean, I think another important part to note about this is this is kind of a beginner plow truck, if you want to call it that. It doesn't require a CDL license, so it diversifies
Yeah.
The people that can actually work for the Public Works Department. It increases the pool of people we can pull from in terms of plowing. Um, one of the hardest things that we're running into is finding people that have CDL licenses. Um, so this is a great segue for like an entry level person for Public Works to get into the department, to learn how to run a, a plow truck that's not, you know, at a high GVW, um, that's for an in-town route. I'm, I mean, what we're doing now is we're not waiting for the snow to accumulate two feet and going out with a big truck and plowing and winging everything back in town. We're more of, you know, two inches on the ground and we're out there all the time just maintaining it. And you need a more nimble, smaller truck to do that, especially in town. You don't need a large giant truck for that kind of work.
No, that makes sense. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, roll call vote, Allison?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, I five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Welcome. Thank you very much, folks.
Good trucking.
Wait a minute, what, don't we have to okay the equipment as well? Is that a separate purchase?
It is.
What is?
But you approve the whole, you approve the whole package just now.
Okay, so.
Yeah. That's my understanding anyway.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave. Ciao. Um, next time our agenda is the approval of the extension of the Constellation, uh, energy, um, um, renewable energy. We've been buying from Constellation for years now. Audrey, I'm going to summarize that and what the period is, the cost comparison to the previous and any changes to this agreement from past Constellation agreements.
So, um, very similar to the last two agreements that we had. Um, and this is, this is really just sort of like, um, holding us over until, uh, we've got our agreement in place with Knox County, um, for their solar. So it would be a five month, month agreement and, um, the kilowatt hour charge would be uh, point zero five four three cents. Um, and it would cover all the same locations that the last contract covered.
Which, as I recall, is about seventy percent of the town's usage.
Yes, and, uh, green energy recs as well.
Right. Which were formerly, um, in the contract and I didn't read it and it don't go from wind power.
Yes.
Board. Sorry.
It's, is it, it's, it's known as a definite thing that we're going to be, um, using Knox County's solar?
You would still have to make a decision on that. Um, but, you know, it, it seems like that's going to be the best option for us moving forward. So this would just sort of be, you know, our, our current contract with Constellation is going to run out. So this would be, you know, temporary until you can make a permanent, until that's ready to go and you make a final decision on whether or not we do that.
Just for clarity, when does this, um, new contract start?
So this new contract would start almost, almost immediately. So it'd start this month. Or sorry, um, beginning of June.
And basically the five, just to be clear, the five months or so, uh, that this contract is to give us time to make the, Allison, to your point, a decision about what our next step is in terms of solar, whether that's Knox County or something else. We still have to cross that bridge.
And, yeah, I, that wasn't meant to be like a really skeptical tone, actually. I just didn't, I guess I didn't realize that, um, that was like a done deal and was going to be coming online and, um, that's great. And maybe I haven't been paying close enough attention to something, but, um, it'd be interesting to hear.
We haven't been given any information out of the works and that they're moving, I guess, quickly on it, but we've been talking about it for four, six months now.
Great.
Now, we, I, I, you sure the five months is enough longer?
It might, it might very well not be. I think a lot of this depends on things like, um, you know, interconnection agreements and, you know, some of the, the usual suspects that, you know, can hold up a solar project.
Okay. Any other questions, board? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the extension or new contract with Constellation, uh, New Energy, Inc.
Second.
Second, Allison. Um, any others for the discussion? Roll call vote, Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, I also five zero. Thank you. On to the next item, which would be the discussion and approval of a, which I believe, I know is a one-year, uh, extension for our, uh, emergency EMS services from Northeast Mobile Health Services, correct, Audrey?
Correct. And, and just to give you a little background on this, this is, um, a, uh, one of the work products that came out of the, uh, consulting agreement that, um, you know, we entered into with, uh, Penn Bay Medical Center in the town of Rockport, um, in regards to EMS services. So I've included the, the report in your packet, but, uh, Kevin McGinnis and his team also, um, came up with recommendations on changes to the contract language. And, uh, Kevin negotiated these changes with Northeast. So, uh, none of the changes ended up in a change to the contract price, but it will be changing some of the reporting requirements. And, and we've talked a lot about, um, you know, the reporting and, you know, response times and how they're measured and, um, you know, all those different, uh, sort of issues um, were ones that were, you know, identified by Kevin and his team and, and discussed over the course of, um, you know, negotiating this new agreement. So, um, you know, I, I think that there's still, you know, as with any sort of new agreement, it's going to be, you know, a lot of data collection. Um, it's kind of teed up for that as well. Um, and, and just trying to make sure that, like, you know, the systems are a little bit more standardized. Um, because, you know, it's always been a little bit of a disconnect with the Knox County Communication System. And I am responding, which is what Northeast uses. And so, you know, hopefully that this contract will clear up some of those issues. We'll all be sort of working from, you know, the same information kind of going forward if we talk about, you know, a contract with them again.
And the financial part of it is fundamentally, it's the last two years and this one a flat, basically all.
Yes, yep, flat from last year. Or, I'm sorry, there was a CPI increase, but other than that, it was flat.
And, and there's an option for a second year, I believe.
Yes.
So, um, Taylor, you go first.
Go ahead, Jim.
Um, yeah, um, sort of, um, agree with what Audrey said. I think that, um, this extension makes sense and is sort of a parallel track in extending this contract with Northeast for an additional year. And, or a new contract really for an additional year with some changes that were needed. While in parallel, we're implementing the, um, first responder program that we talked about a couple of months ago. And which, um, are vital that those work together. I think something that's worth pointing out in this contract is that something we've heard about consistently over the last few years as, uh, I'm thankful that we've had the opportunity to sort of shine a magnifying glass on EMS and how we can improve it. And gotten to a point where we've been fairly successful in doing that in a lot of places. Um, but response time has been something that's been, that's come up and, you know, how long does it take for, for an ambulance to get to someone's door from when they call nine one one? And previously, our, um, way of measuring that, at least contractual. And previously, our um way of measuring that, at least contractually with North, Northeast had been that the clock starts when they start driving and let dispatch know that they're on the way, not from when um the dispatch center lets Northeast know that they need to respond to an emergency. So we're updating that now that um the response times are now calculated based on when Northeast is notified that they need to be somewhere to when they arrive. Um, but the caveat to that, that you'll notice if you look at the contract is that the average that we're now requiring them to meet contractually is now twelve minutes. It used to be nine. They hit about seven minutes on average um to come from their base in Rockport on average to the calls in Camden. Um, contractually, we were holding them to nine, so now we're adding three minutes to that. So I think it's just worth having the community be aware that um what we're sort of saying is that an ambulance, from the time they're notified to the time they show up in Camden to the doorstep on average, by contract, we're saying it needs to be twelve minutes or better. Um, there's probably an additional two or three minutes that happen while the nine one call taker is asking questions and figuring out what needs to happen. So I, I'm highlighting that because I think people just need to be aware that twelve to fifteen minutes, if we're looking at that as the average that we hold them to, I think it will be a little sooner than that. Um, starts to get to a point where, you know, I think most people would like to see that be shorter, be sooner. And that's where the first responder program comes in. Because instead of simply just waiting for an ambulance to come from the base in Rockport, we can be providing that service from the Camden Fire Department with our first responders who could be significantly closer to a call and be able to get there sooner. So that while an ambulance, we may be waiting for that nine, ten, eleven, twelve minutes. Um, someone from the town of Camden can get there sooner and start rendering care if necessary. So um I am in favor of this contract and doing this. I think that that's an important highlight to have in mind. Knowing that this is a work in progress and it's, you know, vital that the first responder programs should sort of be brought up to speed to make this all work the way it's intended to.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Marco.
Uh, I have to go along with everything Taylor said. Uh, I think the report that Mr. McGinnis did with his team is, is very comprehensive and identifies the correct path to move forward for now. And then, and there are different options for the future we can dis- discuss down the line. Um, and the one thing that um, we need to make sure, something we need to consider down the line, sometimes it's not only the amount of time it takes for um, an ambulance to get there, but it's the quality of service that they uh perform when they arrive. And that's still something we need to discuss down the line. That's one of the reasons we're having further discussions. But having, uh, last year, having a number of police officers and fire, fire, uh, Camden fire people go to uh EMT training is gonna be a substantial uh good thing for, for us in this town.
Thank you. Allison, get your hand up.
Um, yeah, I, I thought the report was really outstanding, actually, from the perspective of somebody that doesn't know all of the inner workings. Um just the way they went about it and the, the insight into Penn Bay and how that works and the, it was really transparent too. I liked how they said, you know, there are reports of this, but that might not be true. This might be sort of gossip. This might be. They really just helped distill things down to what is known and, and not known. Um, so I was just wondering, is, is this report somewhere already on our website? I know there a lot of these things get buried in packets and then they become hard to find. Can we make sure that that's somewhere easily accessible on the?
Well, it's, it's not yet, but we can certainly do that. Um, and there was a, a good point that Allison made with a lot of comments that came out of the study and that Mark made in regards to the quality of service. You know, one of the biggest sort of findings of their study was that sort of a, a lack of consistent supervision at the Rockport Base um, was one thing that was, it was a pretty major finding and it was pretty consistent. Um, regardless of who they were speaking to, the hospital or the towns. And um, in the contract, it's included that operational supervision um, and a dedicated base manager at the Rockport Base is required as per their contract with us. So I think that that's, you know, it, it's one thing that it might not kind of stick out, but I think that's a really important amendment to this agreement.
Thanks, Audrey. Allison.
And then I'm just wondering where we stand on getting people um certified. I know some people did trainings, um, but how much progress has actually been made in, in terms of people who are ready to fill that role?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know the exact number, but I definitely think that um, you know, sort of getting an update on that and a plan for rolling that program out. Um that's an update that we need to do soon and, you know, furthermore, like the, the second step of this is sort of looking at that regional fire-based EMS. Because if you start to look at, and I know that I've explained this all to you, um, but, you know, when you start to look at what what us in the town of Rockport spend combined on fire and EMS, we're getting really, really close to the point where it just, it it's, it's gonna make sense for us to try to work with each other to regionalize our services and, and work together to have you know, sort of a, a regional fire-based EMS out of at least Camden and Rockport. Um, and a lot of the ability to do that, I think that, you know, there's, there's more planning work to do to get to that point and a lot more work to do between the Camden and Rockport Select Boards as well as, you know, myself and whoever the new uh town manager will be in Rockport. Um, but you know, a lot of that will depend on sort of what their priorities are. You've all been very clear with me that this is a huge priority for Camden. Um, and if we have sort of the same level of interest and urgency in Rockport, you know, I, I think we can make a lot of headway into that over the upcoming year. Um, but we're really financially getting at the point where it's not just you know, something that operationally makes sense from like a control, like a control over quality of service and service delivery perspective, but also a financial pers- perspective for both towns.
I think it's good to state that we're, we're on a journey, a journey to improve EMS in our towns. Uh, you're right, Camden, Rockport and wherever. Um, this, this step is an improvement already on what we've had, but we're not there yet. And to Allison's point, we do need to bring it to a discussion when you think the time is right to give us an update on some of the things you just mentioned.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd like to talk about sort of the, you know, the steps that we're making with that program to, you know, build first responder capacity and also you know, how do we work with Rockport on the ne- next steps around all the planning that we would need to do to figure out? You know, if a regional fire-based system between the two towns is, is what we want to start looking into and figuring out.
When you're ready, we'll just apply, we'll get it to the agenda for discussion. I have a motion to, to accept the uh, the Northeast contract. I'm sorry, who made the motion? I missed it.
I did.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Taylor. Whoops, a discussion, further discussion. Not hearing any, we'll go to Ms. Jenna. Jenna? Uh, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Uh, I, I did, the question I noticed Chris Farley, Chief Farley showed up. Does he have any comments?
Give him a chance in a second.
Aye.
Jenna? It's four zero approved. Uh, if Chris, Chris, if you're there, if you'd like to say something, please feel free to do so.
Hi, Bob.
Hello, Chris, how are you?
Good, thanks. Uh, I just, I, I agree with what Audrey said and interestingly enough, I, I just had a study forward to me from Vermont today that talked about a similar thing in northern Vermont and how a series of communities, you know, try, need to try and work more together, so um, you know, just kind of parallels what Audrey just talked to you about in terms of Camden and Rockport doing more things together in this line, and I think that's something that we need to try and, and and come together and, 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 and move that forward.
Thanks, Chris. Um, but uh, uh, so you agree with everything that Audrey's laid on and hopefully we'll be readdressing this in the not too distant future about the next steps to uh, continue, make sure we stay on this journey. Thank you, thank you so much. Um, with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the application for ramp and float for one twenty seven Sherman's Point Pro. Um, Audrey, how do you want to intro this?
Um, unfortunately, the, the memo that um Jeremy sort of wrote in regards to all this, which I think lays it out really well, um, I forgot to forward to Janice for inclusion in your packet, but I guess sort of the long and short of it is, this is, you know, sort of a, a proposed project that doesn't really neatly fit into um, you know, any sort of definitions in our harbor ordinance and after the harbor master, um, the town attorney and our planning and development directors sort of looking at it. Um, they kind of all came to, you know, sort of what you're being asked to do, which is now, um, you know, approve, approve this based on, you know, a criteria and um whether or not that project meets the criteria. So just to kind of lay that out for you, it would be, does this project interfere with or pose a hazard to the navigational channels between the inner harbor and the bay and from the public vessel ramp to the main channel? Um, does it substantially eliminate or interfere with existing and designated mooring and anchorage areas and access thereto? Does it substantially reduce or interfere with these, is existing shell fishing and clamming areas and access thereto? Uh, does it interfere with public vessel launching and pier facilities? Does it substantially block or interfere with public rights of passage and uses of the shores and flats? Or adversely affect small recreational boating activities to a substantial degree? So really based on that narrow criteria, you're being asked to sort of make a decision on this project.
Um, comments board, Allison, go ahead.
So I I think there are a lot of um problems here with the process. Um, I know that the applicant is um really knowledgeable about um Camden and the history of the ordinance and is also really um sensitive to all of the ecological issues in Sherman's Cove. Um, I think as everybody's pointed out, the ordinance is poorly worded and vague. Um, some of us are seeing it very clearly one way, some of us are seeing it very clearly the other way, and some people are seeing it not at all clearly. Um, so the issue um for me here is that um, this is very different from the last one that we did following these criteria. Um, because this one falls into the area of Sherman's Cove which um has more protections than really anywhere else um in the harbor. And so that, that's that line that goes from Sherman's Point Road across the Cove to Marine Ave. Um, and in that area is where um piers, wharves, breakwaters, um, that type of thing, that's part of the outer harbor, but it's we're not allowed to even consider putting those things into that area. Um the review process that we're being asked to go through tonight um is the review process for approval of piers, wharves, breakwaters and bulkheads in the outer harbor. So there's a process that can be followed. Um, there is a pathway to having new piers and things like that in the outer harbor. Um and that's the, that's the process that we follow for that, but if this doesn't, um if those things are not allowed in the area of Sherman's Cove where um this is going. And so we can't use a review process for a pier if we're also saying at the same time, oh, this isn't a pier. So if it doesn't require, um it just can't, it can't be both. So if we are gonna say that it doesn't require permit and it doesn't require anything from the town and that this is does, isn't one of those structures that is, that is banned because it isn't a structure, then um it doesn't need anything at all. It shouldn't be going through this, this criteria process. So we can't, it's a catch twenty-two by uh, we, we can't be both. It would either need to have been that the, the property owner could just do this with just their Army Corps permit. Um, and there's the other issue is that the ordinance refers to any structure that requires a permit. And the interpretation of what, what is a permit or what isn't a permit is an Army Corps permit, a permit. To me, it's clear as day that of course that's a permit. To other people, a more nuanced look, I think they make it, can make an argument that that's not what the ordinance intended. Um, did we intend to ban all ramps and floats in Sherman's Cove forever? I don't know. This particular one is gonna be out of the water a lot of the time. It's gonna be very different than what is already there, so this is the type of situation where the ordinance says that when things aren't clear and things are complicated, it is supposed to go to the Harbor Committee. Um so I think that staff had two, a few different routes, which was one to just say the town of Camden is uninvolved in this because it's a seasonal thing that isn't regulated by us. Um, or it could have gone to the Harbor Committee to be looked at a little bit more carefully. But that going to us and asking us to, to approve it based on the criteria for it being a pier is just a a very messy precedent to set. Um, and I I'm just not, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this process tonight. There might be other processes that I'm, would be fine with.
Thanks, Allison. Taylor?
Uh, question and a comment. I'm curious if Bill Kelly has uh an interpretation on this based on what Allison had to say.
Yes, and I, I mean, he's pretty much said what I relayed to you, which is your job is to make a decision based on the criteria that I read to you.
Okay.
Not to interpret the, his interpretation of the ordinance is that that's your role in all this.
Okay. Um with that, I just don't feel like, if that is the case, that we feel that the, that the right process is for the select board to simply um, decide, make the decision tonight. I don't feel like I have enough information to make that decision tonight and I'm not comfortable doing so.
Thank you, Taylor. Marco, you have a comment?
Uh, I think I'll wait for you, Bob, because we've discussed it at length.
Okay, well, I, I, I have to I think fundamentally, we've uncovered, which is no secret, it was, we have some less than perfect ordinance language without, without question in my mind. Um, and I, I, I think I, I also um, I'm concerned about, um, because of that confusion and not, not, sorry, lack of clarity regarding the permit, that kind of thing. As I read it, I have a tendency to agree with Allison, because I, I definitely think that the, the report is a permit. It doesn't say town permit, it probably should. Uh, and perhaps what we could do is move with all dispatch to move with correcting, clarifying intent. That's the word marketing is uses when he talks about agreements, that's the intent counts, uh, with the intent of that document to be more clear. Um, be- before we make any decision that could set a precedent for that area, because, you know, we all know that we all agree the harbors are a precious commodity and I, and uh, this has come on like a, like a, like a, a, a hard wave. As far as I'm concerned, it came, it came on rather quickly and um, and I don't feel comfortable with approving it at this point either. However, I don't want to leave uh, the applicant, you know, hanging out either, because they've been, I understand they've been working at this for quite a while, um, but unless we correct um, that, uh, that language, I, I think we have a problem.
Well, I just want to be very clear. You're not going to be able to correct the language without going through a whole other process. So I mean, I, I think Taylor's point that if you're not comfortable making a decision based on the criteria that I read to you is the position of the board, that's completely understandable. However, if what you're saying is you don't like the interpretation and you're, you wanna, or you don't like the ordinance as it is, that's a whole different problem with a whole different process for addressing. And I'm not saying we can't do both, I'm just saying I don't want you to conflate the two.
I agree. My comments were based on exactly that. I don't think this is applicable to apply that criterion, and if I were forced to do it, I would say the criterion is not acceptable.
Well, I would just say, Bob, that your job is not to administer the harbor, the zoning ordinance. That's the job of the code enforcement officer or the harbor master and the attorney. And what I'm telling you is that's the advice given, is that this is the interpretation, like it or not. And your job is making a decision based on that criteria. And that, and that's what Bill's gonna tell you and you can disagree with it, but that is your job in this situation.
Allison.
So. If you're asking us to review criteria, it is our job to interpret the ordinance. I agree that if the code enforcement officer had made a determination that there was no role for the town here, that this, that a ramp and a float and what's being proposed does not fall under anything that we would get involved with. And I was out there and I see a, a ramp and a float as proposed up here there, I might say, yeah, I don't know, does that count or not? And I might grumble and say, maybe we should look at the ordinance or, um, or I might say, nah, it's, you know, it's temporary, that's fine. That would be their call to make um, independently and that's okay. But when we're, we've been brought into this um, to, to very carefully read the ordinance and to understand. And the criteria literally is the criteria for reviewing the impact of a pier, wharf, bulkhead, or all of the things that this has been determined not to be. So um, that, that doesn't work. I would like to see, it, it's difficult to have Bill Kelly's um, opinion referenced secondhand. I think it would be good for us to see that in writing. I would also be comfortable with um, a revised interpretation that because it's been determined that, you know, something in writing that says this is not a structure, this is not all of these things, it doesn't need anything. Um, I think would be a more reasonable interpretation that I, but I'm, I'm not going to go through here and say this, this pier, wharf, bulkhead, or blah, 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 doesn't, you know, does all of these things because it's just a straight, it's just, if it doesn't need a permit, it doesn't need review by us. It doesn't need any of those things. If it's not a structure, it doesn't need us to review whether it meets the criteria. Um, I do want to point out that the um, applicant is here. I don't know um, if, um, so go ahead and, and, and raise your hand through the Zoom feature if you'd like to be brought in.
Mark, you have any input?
No, uh, keep listening.
Okay, let's. Thought I saw a hand go up, but I guess not.
You got it?
I thought I saw a hand go up, but um, I guess.
I didn't see any hand go up, that's why.
I'm gonna just click on allowed to talk, just in case.
There he is, there he is. Phillip, are you there? Lou.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, Phillip, go ahead.
All right, um, thank you very much. I appreciate, um, I had a nice conversation with Allison uh, today earlier. She, you know, walked along the shore and, you know, I, I appreciate that this is, um, you know, the language is not, i- is hard to follow. It's been hard for us to follow. We have tried really hard since last February to follow all the rules of, you know, of the harbor or, ordinance. And every, at every step along the way in dealing with all of the helpful town officials, we have done everything that was asked of us. And then kind of at the last moment, we heard, oh yeah, you also have to go before the select board, which is where we are now. And, you know, we're happy to do that to explain that this is, you know, I mean, the piece of hardware which is removable, I sent Jeremy Martin a picture of. It's not even three feet long. There is nothing permanent here. There is no, we understood from Bill Kelly's, you know, uh, analysis of this. This is not a permanent, this is not a structure under the definition of the ordinance. And thus, yeah, we were a little bit surprised that we had to go through this. We, you know, we went uh, to the town attorney, then we went to the harbor master. And then kind of at the last moment, we understood we were to go to the select board. That mystified us, but you know, we're trying to, we're trying to follow the rules. This is very, very low impact, you know, seasonal ramp and float. And so we're, we're just trying to, we're trying to be good townspeople. My wife Paige, who is sitting next to me, you know, she spent sixty-two years on this waterfront at this location. And, you know, we, uh, we are big, big protectors of Sherman's Cove. And if we had any thought that this would be in any way ecologically damaging, we wouldn't even think of about it. So. Well, thank you for listening to us.
Thank you for coming on and, and apologize for the process, but this is about process. Um, not about your intent of being negative in any way, shape or form. Um, like we understand your sensitivity and appreciate it and we're, we're trying to make it work too. We're just trying to wrestle through some process complications that we, that I see at least. And we'll, we'll, we're trying to get there. But thank you Phillip, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, back to Mark, did you want to say anything Mark or Jenna? No?
I'm. I, I'm just not knowledgeable enough about the circumstance.
Yeah, it's complicated and I have to read that. Um, as, as, well, we have a couple of options. We can obviously decide not to address it at all, or we can make some specific requests going forward from Audra regarding something directly from Bill Kelly, which we don't have. Um, we have comments from others and say Bill Kelly said this and I have had brief discussions with Bill Kelly. And um, but to my, my knowledge, he hasn't written an opinion at this point in time, is that correct, Audra?
Well, he, he has said that his opinion regarding um, the uh, sorry, he wrote an April tenth, twenty seventeen opinion on um, the Stockman property. And he just was saying that it applies to this as well. But anyway, I guess point remains, I think it would be better, you know, ideally Bill would have been in this meeting. Couldn't tonight because of a prior commitment. So, I, you know, and I, I think that regardless of that, you've had one member express that even, even if you agreed with the premise that your job was to make a decision based on the criteria I laid out, um, they still don't feel comfortable doing that tonight, um, and need more information. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to table this until Bill can be here and you can, you know, ask those questions directly of him. And also in the meantime, you know, I can provide you with more information on, you know, any background information that you think that would be helpful.
Well, I don't, I personally am not trying to kick the can down the road, Audra, but I, I, I exactly feel that's a, we're, we're at a, I, I couldn't make a decision tonight about this, about this ramp, given the information we have. And in my confusion regarding, I do, uh, think it's our responsibility to understand what the ordinance says and what, and how it's written. Um, and I don't agree with the statements I've heard verbally about, uh, to, to date. I could be convinced differently, but I think we, as a minimum, have to table it. But um, and convince this board that it needs to actually address it at all. Allison, you have another comment?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just like to see something in writing from Bill Kelly with a specific request also to um, review a little bit more carefully whether review is necessary by the select board at all. Because the basic premise of the, the trigger for me with this, that the Stockman property is on the other side of the, of the line. Um, and we, if, if that one wasn't a structure either, then we may not have needed to review it at all. Um, so we may have made a mistake in that one as well and sort of over reviewing. But regardless, the principal issue here is that this is, this new one is on, you know, the other side of the line. So we, we can't say it's the same as the Stockman property.
Can we get that kind of information from Bill by the next meeting?
Yes. I mean, I would recommend Bill come to the meeting because I, believe me, I've spoken to him about every single point that you've raised and I, I think that the, the one thing where um, you know, I think it is whether or not you even need to review it is the, the main, the main thing.
Yep, okay.
Aside from being comfortable, like if the determination is that you do indeed need to review it, everybody feeling comfortable that they understand what that criteria is and what the proposal is and how they relate to one another.
Yep, and then if any required, that may help us with a future required clarifications to whatever. It could be the harbor range, could be whatever that, I think we don't want to be doing this every time something like this comes up, obviously.
Well, yeah, and I think that's another, I mean, through stuff like this, you find weaknesses or areas where like intent doesn't match practice. So I mean, I would, I would say it's a good idea that, um, you know, as a result of this, if, if there's a ordinance amendment you want to propose and send to the harbor committee for review, that it's a, it's a good idea while it's fresh in everyone's mind and we've gone through this thought experiment or, or not even that, like a real exercise of trying to figure out what this is.
Yeah, actually, Audra, it's very timely because we may be revising the harbor ordinance's potential for other use, other situations. So it's timely and aggressive. With that, board, do you, uh, motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table till uh, June first.
Second.
And a second um, discussion. We'll call, uh, we'll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you very much. Um, the last item on our actions list is the approval of the auditing service for our forthcoming fiscal year, is that correct, Audra? Or this year, actually?
Yes, yes, FY twenty-one. Um, so as you can see in the packet, I'm not going to get into too much detail. But uh, we had three firms that responded to our RFP. Um, one of them being the current firm that we work with, the other two are out of state firms. Um, so I would just, you know, recommend that we move forward with um, renewing our contract with RHR Smith for this financial year that we're currently in FY twenty-one. And then um, you know, we can sort of rebid again in, in that year is, or around this time next year.
And the rebid idea is because you're looking to get more entities to propose or?
Yeah, I would like more entities to put in a proposal. And this has been, I think, a tricky year for a lot of the auditing firms just due to COVID and.
A lot of issues going on because of, of the virus. Um, and you said the two firms other than RHR out of state?
Yes.
And New Hampshire, Massachusetts?
New Hampshire.
Board comments, Mark?
Uh, I noticed that we want to continue, you want to continue with our current auditor for another year and then bid again. But they are also one of the bidders on the contract, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, that's RHR and the second, the second one. We'll list here, Mark.
Okay, how long, how long do the contracts go for when, when we approve it?
We can.
We do it for about, we do it for three years.
Three years, okay, so we're just extending theirs for a year or we rethink it. Okay.
And, and like Jody said in her memo, um, it doesn't really, this isn't like a really good picture of what's available for auditing services. Um, and it's, yeah, there, there's just going to be so many single audits required all across the state by so many different municipalities that um, a lot of, a lot of them just feel so tied up this year that I think they're going to have a better idea of what their capacity is.
Yep.
To bid again next year.
Okay.
Other comments, board?
It makes sense to me.
So what you'd be looking for is a motion to uh, extend one year with RHR, is that correct, Audra?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Second, but Jenna, discussion. We'll call Allison.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
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 Thanks Jenna and Bob, five zero, thank you. We will move on to our discussion items, the first of which is the American Cruise Lines discussion for two thousand twenty-one cruise ship season. And Allison, I believe we have uh, somebody from American Cruise Ship uh, lines on, and the, and as an attendee, would like to bring them up, please. Can I, I'm not sure who it is.
All right, and I guess just to give a little background to this. Um, so you know, the, the town was approached about the, you know, FY, or the current um, summer season and um, you know, whether or not we're comfortable accepting cruise ships into Camden Harbor. And I guess like with, you know, like with any industry, there were um, guidelines that they're required to follow, you know, per the CDC and um, you know, not being familiar with a lot of those guidelines and some of the, you know, concerns that we saw, you know, last season. Um, we were, we were kind of uncertain of what to do. So we, we just wanted to have this discussion with the select board and, you know, allow representatives the uh, chance to kind of talk to you all about the um, measures that they have in place.
The person, I just want to ask the person from American Cruise Lines to unmute and identify yourself if possible.
Sure, so good evening, uh, my name is Mike Alvo, I'm the Senior Manager of Marine and Hotel Operations. Nice to be here with everyone.
Thank you.
So do you have any specific questions, I guess, about our, our, our plan? I know I had sent Liz um, the most recent copy of our risk mitigation plan as well as a letter that Paul Takelet, our Vice President, had sent um, to Audra. Um, I believe last week, just about our, our first cruise and the reduced capacity and the number of guests that we're going to be onboard, um, vaccinated guests and I think the opportunity to answer any, any questions that may have come up in, in Camden specifically to our arrivals.
Is your, is your planned schedule for FY twenty-one summer in terms of um, Camden events the same as last, uh, two years ago?
It is, so we've got, there are nineteen dates in which we plan to have a ship in, in Camden Harbor, that would be the Independence. Um, typically, we operate two ships up in Maine. The Constitution is, is too large and typically that day is in Rockland, but our, our guests would come over uh, from Rockland and, and experience Camden. But the, the only ship that would actually be in Camden Harbor would be the Independence.
Okay. And that's just, just, just more for public benefit, the, the capacity of the ship versus what you're actually booking these days is?
Sure, so the Independence can hold a hundred guests. Right now, that, that first arrival has forty-eight guests on. Uh, so we plan to start the, the season up in, in Maine with fifty percent capacity onboard the ship and then that will increase to seventy-five percent as the summer continues.
Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I notice, I think that the first stop is everyone needs to be vaccinated in your passengers, is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
That's correct.
After that, you don't require people to be vaccinated, that the rules change. And uh, i- if I read that correctly, starting in July, I guess. And I, I guess I'm asking for most of the people that watched what happened last year with the problems that cruise ships had, uh, being a contained space with people um, unvaccinated. How do you feel about, I'm putting you in a tough spot, how do you feel about having unvaccinated people in those closed quarters?
So right now, the, the rule right now we have is that we are planning to have guests vaccinated through the end of June. Um, our plan as an organization is to reevaluate that mid-June. Um, we've had great success so far throughout the country. Right now, we're operating ten ships, we've had almost fifty departures um, all over the country. All of those guests um, have been vaccinated in, in most recent and again in, in line with CDC guidance. Five percent um, of the ship can be unvaccinated. Um, and so we have started in some of the more recent departures to allow a, a handful of guests that are, that are not vaccinated to, to cruise with us. Um, and, and that has been successful. I would say to your question before about unvaccinated guests and the issues that happen on, on larger cruise ships. A lot of that has to do with the, the ship itself, um, the number of people onboard and, and for them, their ventilation systems. Um, which was, I think, one of the primary causes that was spreading onboard. All of our ships, again, we've got more space per guest than anything in the industry. Again, we're not, we shouldn't be compared to the ocean-going vessels. It's not a, a fair assumption of our, our clientele, our ship, what it's capable of doing and, and our guests onboard. More space per guest, individual air handlers, and, and we've always had that. That's not something that we've implemented, we've always designed our ships with, with more space, their own HVAC system. We've implemented a lot of things on. We've implemented a lot of things onboard, which I'm sure you've read within our plan, adding the medical officers onboard, um, to treat any potential outbreak that could happen. We've got isolation and quarantine rooms that are on the ship. We've partnered with Vcan Medical Solutions, so they're the company that, uh, is handling all of our, our medical needs. And so they've got a network of, of people that have communicated with different regional hospitals and EMTs, EOCs. Um, again, depending on each town that we've, we've been dealing with, um, to come up with pretty secure plans to, to mitigate any kind of, of outbreak. Um, like I said, we've been operating since the beginning of March, almost fifty cruise departures and ten ships that are operating. And, and we feel fairly confident in the protocols that we've put in place that we can keep our, our guests, our crew and the communities that we visit safe.
Okay, um, I, I personally, just a personal, and I'm, I'm trying to make it a professional opinion. Um, I'm surprised that cruise ships would allow unvaccinated people onboard, um, but the rules have changed a lot. So, um, if you feel safe, I notice you do have a lot of testing involved, uh, people have to take tests and, and all of that. But it's just, just my personal, personal, uh, concern.
Thank you, any other comments, go ahead, Taylor.
Um, yeah, question, shifting gears a little bit away from, um, COVID. I'm just curious, can you describe sort of typically how long do the ships stay in, in the harbor? And when guests come into town during the day, how long do they stay? Um, what does their, um, onshore itinerary usually look like in town?
Sure, so typically we arrive eight thirty in the morning, um, and went there till five thirty in the evening. Um, so we plan shore excursions in the morning and the afternoon. Uh, the launch will run from the ship continuously to, to town. So guests have the option of either doing, um, city tours in, in Camden. We've done walking tours, um, we've done the lighthouse and harbor cruises, uh, so we work with quite a few vendors locally. Um, guests who are not interested in doing a, a planned shore excursion then have the opportunity to walk around town, go to the different merchants, um, some stay in town all day, have lunch, uh, and then return to the ship. Others have breakfast onboard the ship, go out, do a morning excursion, come back to the ship, have lunch onboard and then, uh, return for the afternoon. It really depends on, on their preference and what they're looking to do. I, I would say most of the guests spend a, a few hours in, in each port that we visit.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming and appreciate your input and good luck with your, this season.
All right, yes, well, thank you very much, appreciate it, and, uh, hopefully we'll be visiting Camden.
Thank you, take care.
Thank you.
Um, you don't need any action from us here, Audra, correct? You just wanted to update on the, on the, uh, on the, uh, the safety measures they've implemented for the packet, correct?
Well, I mean, it would be good to get your thoughts on whether or not you're comfortable with, you know, sort of everything that they've laid out. Um, it would just be, you know, helpful for Steve Pixley and myself.
Good. Uh, any comments, board, on the, on the package and the elements that are included in their, um, COVID nineteen plan? I can hear you, Audra, so, uh.
I mean, I see, I, I definitely, I'm, I guess part of me, I'm like hesitant to, to weigh in because I don't have, I don't want to be the like rah rah rah, this all sounds perfect, um, person, because I'm not qualified to, um, make that determination. Um, I can see why we would have the opportunity here to say we want to, you know, to not work with them and to keep, we're, you know, too concerned and we want to try to keep them out of Camden. Um, and I think that Steve and Audra need from us a, you know, a decision about whether we're, you know, working with this plan or against it. Because it's not fair later on then to say, well, I really wasn't comfortable with that and I don't think we ever should have done it. Um, so I mean, I think at this point, from what I've, um, heard, I've spoken with a few people who have, um, read the plan, people that, um, whose, whose businesses rely, um, in one part or another on these people coming to town, um, you know, people that I know to be concerned about COVID and safety. Um, I, I guess at this point I would defer to their opinions, um, more. And so I, I mean, I, I feel comfortable welcoming people to Camden. We don't require people driving through town to be vaccinated. There are going to be people coming to Camden from all over the place and we welcome that. And, um, I think we just continue to follow the guidelines, um, that the CDC sets. But to say that people that arrive here on these, you know, small cruise ships, um, you know, are somehow they, they somehow present a greater risk than somebody arriving on a tour bus. Um, I think is, is totally unreasonable. And so I, I, I enjoy having people come to Camden and chat with them. And I, I don't, I don't know why we would want to keep them out at this point. I, I'm satisfied, I think, with the.
Taylor. Taylor.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Allison's assessment. Um, I think it's, you know, we're in a, we're in a, a tricky place in that, um, I think, you know, nationwide. If you look at the federal CDC guidelines and then Maine now for sort of re-upping and following those federal CDC guidelines, the restrictions are lifting, um, capacity, um, requirements are increasing at both indoor and outdoor gatherings. The requirement to mask indoors will be lifting for vaccinated people. Um, and it's tricky in that, obviously, from our perspective, we want to protect people as much as possible. But I also think it's important that we don't overstep. Um, and, and I think just looking at this through the lens of common sense. We live on the Route One corridor and we cannot control the hundreds and hundreds of people that come in and through Camden on a daily basis. Um, not via a cruise ship. So I think, um, I certainly don't want to stand in the way of, um, the cruise ships doing their business with, you know, less than a hundred passengers onboard. It does seem to me, based on the proposal they've given us, that they have a well-thought-out plan, um, for preventing it, uh, any sort of outbreak. Um, I do share Mark's personal comments that, um, you know, it would be better if they required this for everyone to be vaccinated. But that's not for us to say. Um, so, yeah, you know, I agree with the sentiment that, um, this doesn't feel like something that's appropriate to stand in the way of, um, what I won't do and, um.
Right, uh, yeah. Thanks, thanks, Taylor, Mark.
Um, and, and, uh, let me, um, make clear that my, my comments before, and I said they were personal and sort of surprising. But saying that, in terms of what Allison said and, and what we know, is it won't be hundreds, it'll be thousands of people coming up and down Route One into town. And the people on the boat will most likely between the testing and the vaccinations and the way they're, they're, uh, safety conscious will be safer coming to town than a lot of people driving in. You know, they have more control over who comes and the testing and stuff. So, um, you know, it would be foolish to not welcome them. You know, our towns, uh, after a tough year, our, our, uh, businesses could certainly use the visitors, the town could use the visitors. And they will be safer than a lot of the people that are coming on their own, that decided not to get vaccinated and haven't been as careful in testing. So, um, again, personal comments about the way, you know, I, I approach the virus. But in terms of, of what they've done in the plan they've put forward, you know, for the people that are not vaccinated, they have to be tested. Um, it's about as safe as you can get i- if you're going to ask people not to, not to prove vaccination.
I would agree, Audra, is it fair to state, um, from my simplistic view, that first, first and foremost, that our, our job as select board is to, in town, uh, to, uh, adhere to and manage the criterion of our state government, uh, executive orders of our, of our governor. And that everything in this plan meets or exceeds that at this point in time, is that correct? That's, that's what's important to me. So I, all that, uh, all I've said, I'm very supportive of this and, and, um, hope they have a good season. So do you need, do you want us, anything from us, Audra, other than that?
Um, no, that's, I mean, thank you for your, thank you for your feedback. I, I mean, my kind of, um, reaction was once I had their guidelines, I felt, you know, I felt sort of the same way that I feel about any business operating in town. If you're meeting the state and CD, you know, the CDC guidelines set forth by the state or the federal government, then, um, that's all we're asking of anyone else.
Okay, thank you, Audra. With that, we'll, um, move on to our, uh, number of discussion items, the first of which is, is it, is, um, the moment? Great opening?
Discussion item, the American Recovery Plan?
Wait, yeah, yeah, um, but, um, let's look different from the agenda, hold on a second. One second.
I'm looking at the agenda in the packet, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Um, yeah, the first discussion item would be, um, I'm sorry, a second, this is the second discussion item, the, the American Recovery Plan Funding Guidance, which you gave us an outline of, Audra, and aligning a number of bullet points that you're recommending may apply to us as we go downstream whenever these funds actually flow, correct?
Correct, so, um, just to give everybody a little background on that piece of it that Bob's talking about. So, um, there's only a handful of entitlement communities in the state of Maine. And entitlement communities are ones that receive community development block grants directly. And, uh, you have to have a population of over fifty thousand to qualify, um, for, uh, a community that would receive those funds. So there's only, you know, there's very, very few in the state of Maine. Um, and everyone else, um, in order to receive these funds, much like with community development block grants, it's a pass-through from the state government. So we're really, you know, kind of waiting to find out when the feds are going to be, um, you know, uh, passing this money to the state governments and they're going to pass it on through to, uh, the municipalities. Um, so, you know, kind of as we're preparing for that, um, I just wanted to, because the, you know, the interim rule on how this money could be spent came out. Um, I just wanted to sort of look at, and it's, it's still pretty broad and not specific. I had, I looked at a really interesting discussion, um, on the, um, Maine Town and City Managers List serve that I'm part of about, um, you know, premium pay for essential workers and their, you know, interpretation of that. And it was sort of all over the place, um, very different what I've written. You know, some people had very different interpretations than what I wrote in this memo to you. But I thought that it would be useful to just kind of go through and outline, these are sort of the broad categories of what, um, you know, the federal government has said these funds could be spent on. And just trying to look at, how does this align with some of the priorities that you've all set forth? And how does that, and, and even drilling down, how could that be applied to some of the projects that we've discussed over time? Um, and there's, you know, there's a lot of different opportunities with all of this, but there are a few that, um, just seem a little bit more, um, like they might be better fits and might check off on more boxes in terms of, you know, different things that you've mentioned over, over the years that I've worked with all of you. Um, so that was sort of the intention of this memo, and this could very well change as we receive additional information. And, you know, the sort of priorities of the board might change as you receive feedback from the community on what they would like to see done. So, you know, it's just sort of a first attempt to kind of get the information out there to all of you and talk about, um, you know, any sort of close relationship with things that we've been discussing.
Right, with this applying, just a second, Taylor, um, just a question in general. Well, you talked about the, uh, the past some ordered magnitude of dollars that may be coming down over a couple of year periods, not more than enough. Is it still in that order magnitude of four or five hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so we're still looking at about, I think, uh, Camden, it was, um, four hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. And, you know, we're, we're still waiting on what the disbursements will look like.
And it'll be over multiple years, some number of years, sorry.
What I understood, it was at least a two-year period.
Taylor.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to ask if we, um, in one of the last meetings, the discussion had come up about, um, the county receiving funds and how they were going to disperse money to municipalities or, or not. I'm just curious if there's been any movement on, um, that issue.
Great question, so, um, yeah, I, I'm really glad you brought that up because that's something I did want to talk about with the select board. So, um, as you all know, the, um, town of Camden, and, and I think as of June eighth, the voters of Camden will determine whether or not we're going to be a charter member of the, um, Midcoast Internet. Um, it's not coalition when we, when we actually form.
Inter-local, 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 uh, uh, corporation.
Yeah, so it's a, it would be an inter-local agreement to, to create a regional broadband community. And then Camden and Rockport would be the, the charter members. Um, but the municipalities of, uh, Thomaston, Rockland, Owlshead and South Thomaston also are all poised to, uh, approve the inter-local agreement as well. So that would be, you know, six communities, including all of the service or the majority of the service centers in Knox County that would be part of that coalition. And there's a number of other communities that are talking about joining as well or have interest in joining. So, you know, what's been proposed is that a good use of the county's funds would be the seven point seven to be spent on a regional broadband utility. Um, so I, I think that, you know, that's something that's supported by, you know, a lot of, a lot of communities across our region. And there's an effort underway to, um, lobby the county to consider doing that.
One of those, Audra, uh, just to bring that to a, a real head, don't, don't they have a meeting on June eighth?
June eighth, yep.
In this, we, we have done some, I think it was recently, a, a PR thing went out to the papers about this, supportive of the, for the ballot. But, um, there's some letters have been written, including from your, your signature and, uh, Bill Post, I believe, that went forward already. Um, but I, it seems to me that there's going to be a, a live appearance from some of us at that June eighth meeting. It's more effective, more, more poignant than, just because my opinion, you get emails with letters attached. Yeah, there's an email, a letter, and that kind of goes over there, um, but I, I, do you agree with that?
Absolutely, I would say as many of you as possible, if this is truly a priority for the town, which you've, you know, you've all committed to, you know, broadband expansion and, and the creation of a regional utility being something that's a priority for Camden by, you know, supporting it to go on the ballot and go before voters and all the time and effort, um, you know, that, like, people like Mark have put in, um, through participating in that committee and, you know, all the rest of you through just making it a priority over the years. I'd really encourage every single member of the Camden Select Board, show up at the County Commissioners Meeting on June eighth, it's at two o'clock. Come with prepared remarks about how you support the utility and that you think that that would be a great use of the funds the county is going to receive, because it's truly something that could help the largest proportion of residents in Knox County.
And to that end, one second, Taylor, uh, to that end, I know Rockport Select Board is, is encouraging the same thing on the same day, just FYI.
What, what time is the meeting, can you tell us quickly?
Two P M.
Two P M.
Um, Taylor, you had your hand up.
Um, yeah, the, um, I, I definitely would be supportive of using that money for, um, a regional broadband utility. My question is, um, I've heard so much about, um, federal money being tapped specifically for that within the state of Maine. So I wonder is, I just would want to be sure that we're not using money from the county for that, that when there might be, is there other money that's available specifically for broadband that's coming through the state from the federal government? Or is this our only opportunity to do that? I just want to make sure we're not using this money for that if it's already earmarked for it somewhere else.
I would say that we're going to be a pretty low priority on the list of all the other places in Maine, um, that are going to be vying for the same funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is our best opportunity, is what you're saying?
Absolutely, I'd say that the county, the county funds are the utility's best chance at having a really healthy amount of seed funds to start actually building the network and putting some infrastructure on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
And I'd also recommend the select board invite the, um, County Commissioner who represents our region. And, you know, you've all talked about this anyway for a, a, a number of different things. But, you know, inviting Sharon Pullman to one of your meetings to, you know, emphasize the point about broadband to her as well. Um, and also, you know, just an opportunity to catch up about all the other things that, you know.
When should we do that, Audrey? Could be Jim Burke, right?
Our next meeting is June first, that would be the last chance before the eighth meeting.
I was going to say, long event, but, but maybe we should get that invitation out ASAP because it's not that far away.
Absolutely, um, also, uh, we've contacted the, uh, Director of Broadband from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. Oh, yeah, and he's going to, he thinks it's. Yeah, and he's gonna, he thinks it's so important that he's gonna come to the County Commissioners Meeting on June eighth and also, you know, speak to the commissioners about sort of the importance of, you know, community-owned broadband networks. And, you know, why this is, this is sort of, you know, such a good model for an area like ours and the importance of supporting it. So, you know, that's, and that's, if, if you look up the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, they're, you know, incredibly, you know, well-versed in this area. They're incredible, they're very credible. So I think that getting them to support a very local initiative specifically and take time to come and speak to the Knox County Commissioners about it is just an incredible statement of how important this project could be as sort of a demonstration for other places.
Thanks, Allison.
Just for anybody who might be interested, they have some really great podcasts about local government and broadband. And that's really cool that they're going to speak.
Yeah.
I reached out, I kind of like reached out to Chris Cold, the, the director there of the broadband. And I CC'd in Deborah Hall, and they had already met each other through a panel that they were both on. So it was.
Oh, wow, Deb.
I mean, I should have known that Deb was already connected to him, but it was really, it was really.
They're out there, that's for sure.
She's left no stone unturned. Wow.
Audrey, maybe an email from you to all of us as a reminder about the location, time of the June eighth meeting.
Yes, I'll send you the agenda, and I, it's, I believe it's a Zoom meeting. So I'll send you their agenda and I'll have the link on it. And I'd say just, you know, like with any, any sort of meeting like that, the more people kind of standing up and speaking.
Letters are nice, but faces are a lot more, more effective. Thanks, Audrey.
Yes, thank you all.
I'm sorry.
Whoops, sorry, my watch.
Personally, just for anybody listening, I really like it when people write letters to me. So don't, don't get any, like.
Okay, I just think in this case, a personal involvement is required, and it probably is, Rockport's doing the same thing. Onward to our update on established priorities. The first one, I'm sorry, we had a couple of discussions on zoning ordinance amendments. The first of which is the, I cut this right, yeah, is the parking standards.
Yeah, and I, I think.
What are the discussions we're going to establishing, you know, the prioritizing on? And they are going to have to be carried over into our July priorities meeting because, especially if we consider them a variety. So the first one was parking standards. Audrey, why don't you give a capsule of that? Parking change that's being, that should be contemplated or recommended to be contemplated downstream.
Yeah, so we had, we'd sort of talked about this in the context of discussions around housing affordability and different, you know, sort of deeply small changes that we can make to our zoning ordinance that'll, you know, remove barriers to the development of housing. So that's sort of the context by which we had talked about parking standards and, you know, removing parking, like minimum parking requirements. However, like another thing has sort of brought the urgency to look at this issue to our attention. And that's sort of the, you know, the incredible turnover of businesses in the downtown. I think that's really kind of shone a light on just some of the, the illogical nature of having parking requirements in a downtown area where we have so much public parking available. You know, it, it's just, it's coming up as an issue over and over again where these new businesses that are trying to establish themselves in downtown Camden are coming up against this minimum parking requirement issue and the need to show that they've leased parking spaces that are theoretically supposed to be open to the public. But if you're leasing parking spaces in any of the private lots that are available to do so within downtown Camden, those spaces aren't available to the public. So it's just a really illogical economy around parking that our ordinance is spurred. And it's just creating a lot of barriers for new businesses to start up in Camden. So I, you know, I guess like, we all knew it was an important and sort of urgent issue from a housing perspective. But now we're finding this is an important and urgent issue, particularly in the downtown zone from a small business perspective. So I think that, you know, it's, it's kind of like, it's all come to a head. I wouldn't recommend waiting until November to address this issue. And I just want to sort of talk about it with the board to get some go-ahead to really move forward on this. And I know Jeremy's working with the planning board, you know, to get them across it and get them moving on it. But I think that, you know, if this particular board can, can sort of, you know, get everything ready, particularly with some new people coming in as of June eighth, we were able to move on this at some point in the summer with a, you know, a special town meeting. I just think that that's going to alleviate a lot of frustration and just, just a lot of illogical things that are going on to try and make this work.
Mark?
I, I think you've laid it out perfectly. This is such a common sense idea to eliminate these parking requirements the way they are now. It's just, it's just foolish to have them. It just, it, it's just insane. I totally support changing, changing those rules.
Taylor?
Uh, yeah, I totally agree. I think, you know, I realize I only have a couple of weeks left on the board. But, you know, common sense to me, I think there's a lot, even the parking standards is a perfect example of some of the frankly archaic and outdated ordinances that we have on the books kind of across the board that negatively affects small businesses in particular, that makes them jump through hoops that are totally unnecessary and don't make any sense and may have years ago when it was implemented. But now the intent just puts up unnecessary barriers for people that are just trying to get a business going. So I think in that sentiment, the parking standards going away makes sense. But I think that that hopefully is a model for taking a swing at other things in the same vein.
Great, thank you.
Bob, can I speak for a second?
Sure, Jenna.
Um, so I completely support changing the parking standards and everything that has been said prior to my participation. However, I do just want to point out something, which is that there has been a little microeconomy built around these parking standards. There are people who have bought, for example, my dad used to own a parking lot where they rented spaces for this exact reason. And there are others around town. And I completely agree with flattening prohibitions for new businesses. But I do just feel like that's worth pointing out.
Thank you, Jenna. Thank you very much. Allison, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to figure out what maybe pathway we could all support. Because I think sometimes what's happened in the past is, especially in cases where planning board review or planning board, everything is required.
Yep.
It's like we all sort of agree, but then somebody decides that they want to look at the whole issue comprehensively instead. And with, or, you know, something to that effect. So if we could, I think if, since we've been looking at this for quite a long time and it's finally, you know, it was one of the first things that Audrey tried to look at when she got here. And I only understood a portion of the issue at that point. And I think a lot of us have come to understand it a lot better. So I think if we could try to be as specific as possible in saying, you know, something like, you know, eliminating parking requirements for all, you know, off-street parking requirements for all non-hotel businesses in the blah, blah, blah district. That, and to say that, you know, we would sort of have an expectation that this is just a housekeeping item a little bit. This is, the downtown master plan goes through all of the negative impacts of this. I've recently been reading that actually, and it has a lot of just really good stuff in it. But if, if, I'd, I'd like to make a really formal request to the planning board that this be fast-tracked and then a special town meeting as, as soon as possible. Because especially with all these new businesses trying to open and us trying to, we're, we're trying to compete right now for new businesses coming to Camden versus somewhere else. And we're losing things like the Sherman's Bookstore and all these cool things. We should act as quickly as possible to, you know, just try to eliminate at least this one barrier. So.
To that, I want to, great segue to what I wanted to say, Allison, thank you. And that is, I think we may come up with other ideas as we discuss tonight, a couple more here. But I think it's very important that the, that the outline of what is being proposed to be changed be bulleted. So everybody knows that these are the things we're looking to change is item one. Item two then is the schedule of implementation of developing the ordinance changes, going through the planning board on a schedule basis. So we know to how, how, and if that schedule is being, to Allison's point, is being changed because of some, some side input, we need to hear about. So I think, I think it's very, because the other factor, we know in the past, we've had priorities brought to the table by this board. And one, one time in particular, we had a long list of ordinance priorities. And Jeremy, you wanted to spending ninety percent of your time on ordinances. So I say this because you have other things on your plate. But we, if we can have some agreements, we're not two months downstream saying, where the heck is it? You know, if that's important. And I'd like to see that outline developed in the schedule, like by the next board meeting or the latest.
Sure.
Okay, so that's just a procedural comment on my part. I obviously totally support this change. I totally support doing it as quickly as possible. But on the other hand, I realize this reality. We want to respect your job and what you get done to.
Ian, can I just make a comment trying to touch on what Allison was trying to get to about the process? And sometimes things get lost in the process or they want a comprehensive look. The town, the process for a zoning ordinance amendment is either we can go this route of having the planning board discuss or the town can propose ordinance changes and bring it to the, through the process. And that's what I would suggest in this, is that I'll, I'll draft some ordinance changes and work them through the process as if this is the town requesting an ordinance amendment and not the planning board going off on a discussion on parking ordinance requirements. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think it is very, it's very, very important though, to, before you spend time, a lot, a lot, a lot of time redrafting that we understand we're on the same page with the bullets, the items that are being changed. Doesn't have to be. To me, that's the crux of what you're changing, certain elements, and then the wording you do a great job of.
Yeah.
And I would, I would say that, you know, to Allison's point, kind of the, the issue that we're dealing with now that's immediate, it's the B one only. I'm, I think that, in my opinion, we should do it across every single zone. But I understand that's a, that takes a little bit more time and discussion. But right now, for the sake of urgency, it's the B one. And, you know, I think there's been some consternation about hotels. So it's perfectly acceptable that if all of you agree with it, it's, you know, it would be exempted for all businesses in the B one with the exception of hotels.
And this is where I want the bullet list to be brought to the table so we're all on the same page. Because there's probably elements just like that that we have to be on the same pages. I'd like to get that in front of us ASAP.
I have one more thing to bring up about this, and it pertains to what Jenna talked about. There is a difference between visitor parking and employee parking. And if we're going to change it for businesses, one thing we can talk about is employee parking. Because the one complaint I hear about is the employees taking all downtown spots and not being, not being properly parking their vehicles properly, which, which, which affect the ability of people to find spots to do. So maybe we could address employee parking as part of this as well.
I don't think that's something that we can ever address through a zoning ordinance. That's something that we need to address through a parking management system.
Yep.
And that's the whole point of.
Again, this brings me back to the point about getting the summary list of what we're trying to change. Because we have to have these debates, and there's probably about five or six other pair of me and Audrey to think of. And I just want, I'm just recommending to the board that we have that to our attention ASAP. So we can do the drafting, do the, be ready for a special town meeting in a short time period. Allison, you want to summarize?
Right, yeah. I mean, we've talked before about having these lists of priorities and ones that were easy, you know, short-term, medium-term, long-term, and trying to find ways to triage it so that if there are things that we're ready to move forward right away, we can say, okay, well, we'll throw out, we don't have to talk about hotels. We don't have to talk about this, we don't have to talk about that. But like, let's look for six things we can move on quickly. Be great to.
I agree. So if we can, Jeremy, let's try to draft that as soon as possible, even email it out prior to the meeting, and we can discuss it in the next meeting.
Yeah, and I, I think we can easily have a draft of that ready to go for the first.
Okay. The next item is River Business First Floor. Residential.
Before we move on to that, since we're already talking about parking
Yep.
in the downtown.
That was, that was going to be my question, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to segue into, yeah, I, I've been getting a lot of calls about, you know, what is the striping plan going to be for downtown? And, you know, I, I just kind of wanted to get it out there that, at this point in time, we don't really know exactly what the striping plan, the new striping plan is going to be for downtown Camden once that project is finished. Because there are things that are like, and a lot of them are subtle changes, but they're big enough that I don't feel comfortable kind of coming up with a striping plan and committing to that until that work is done. But I, I definitely wanted to talk with you about all this. And sort of the, the point that I've been making to everyone is that we've gotten a tremendous amount of pushback from Camden year-round residents, employees that work in town, that, you know, their biggest concern is the lack of safety in the crosswalks due to sightlines being impeded. And I wouldn't just say it's like people that are pedestrians, also motorists who go through downtown Camden that live here. So I just want to state that, the way that I understand it, when we're kind of at a point where we're working with MDOT on a striping plan, the priority is to make sure that we're improving the sightlines for both the motorists and the pedestrians around those downtown crosswalks. Because we're already starting to get a tremendous amount of pushback about that and the concerns over a loss of, you know, any amount of parking at all. But I, I just want to be very clear, and I want the select board to have a chance to either push back on me or validate what I'm saying, that, you know, we're, we've gotten more feedback about people who are concerned about the safety issues than pushback from others who are worried about losing a few parking spaces.
Audrey, the ASHTO standards, which is what MDOT goes by, the National, are very specific about the parking spaces and it means losing some parking spaces around those crosswalks because of safety reasons.
Right, I, I just want to, it's going to be inevitable that we're going to lose some spaces. We don't know exactly how many that means yet.
Understood. Allison?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really good to prepare ourselves for what is to come and to remind ourselves what the past planning exercises have said and what. Because it's, it's really easy when you're looking at a parking spot that you always parked in and all this stuff. I believe I've been maybe on the wrong side of history a time or two. And, but when we listen, when we went to all, did all of these forums, this is what we're hearing over and over and over again. Like, why is it that Camden continues to paint the lines in a way that everybody agrees is very unsafe? We've gotten so much feedback on this. So, you know, not to mention the fact, it would be, I think everybody should try to just brush through the downtown master plan a little bit, which is something that's been, was voted on. It was, you know, not everything in there is perfect. But overall, it really lays out the explanation for why giving up some parking spaces in a few places makes sense. And how ultimately, when you make things easier and safer for pedestrians, you bring more business, not less. It doesn't become an inconvenience to not have a car sometimes. A lot of the reason people need to have their cars is because it's, you know, not that enjoyable to be a pedestrian sometimes. So we're, we're gonna get a, there's gonna be pushback. But I think we all need to be really, like, not, you know, it might be that we need to review the old public hearing from this project or I just don't want us to be vacillating. Because there's gonna have to be a change. And I don't, it shouldn't be acceptable to us that we go through this whole process again and then restripe things and like at the, you know, the status quo level. We have to have an improvement. So, thank you, Audrey.
Thank you very much. It's a good point.
And also, I'd like to, I'd just like to state, because I know this has been a little bit of a sticking point. And, you know, if we're always telling businesses that, you know, their employees need to park in places. And, you know, if we're always telling businesses that, you know, their employees need to park in places like the Knox Mill Parking Lot and then. You know, town employees are not doing that. Um, it sounds hypocritical. And today I've asked all town employees that have parking spaces around this building to park in the mill and everybody is committed to doing that. Um.
Whoa.
Yes, they were, they were wonderful about it. Um, so we're going to do it on a seasonal basis. So, you know, when um, you know, I think it's October fifteenth will be the date when, you know, they'll be able to go back to that, but. You know, I'm going to, those. Spaces will be um marked as two hour parking because what we don't want to have happen is our employees move out of them and then all of the surrounding businesses employees. That would totally defeat the purpose, but you know, we really, I really want to practice what we're preaching.
Yes.
And all the employees that work in this building are on board with it. The only exception to it will be. The code enforcement officer because she's constantly in and out all day and it's just going to take up an unnecessary amount of time as she's constantly walking from an offsite space. So that'll be the one exception, but everybody else is agreed to.
Completely by example, Audrey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone in this building. They were really great about it.
That is amazing. Wow. Um, and so that inspires me to try to recommit to doing the same thing myself. Um, when I visit the town office, maybe we could all try to do that, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Audrey and Jeremy too. Um, River Business First Floor Residential, Audrey.
Uh, yeah, so this is just another kind of sort of thing that came up. Um, and I I just wanted to get some guidance from on the board, from the board as to whether or not this is something that you would also. Like us to work on when we're working on parking standards, but we did find that. I think, you know, when we were going through the exercise with the tannery of um, you know, trying to. Pick out um, you know, proposals that we wanted to put forward to voters that, you know, regardless of which proposal you were entertaining. That sort of barrier to not allowing residential on the first floor in that zone. Um, made housing pretty prohibitive or the development of housing pretty prohibitive.
Yep.
Um, so that's just something I want to talk about the, with the board to see if there was any interest in addressing that.
It's just so independent also, Audrey.
If for the river business.
Just the river business, so. Is what you.
Very targeted. Let's, I guess the question is, do you want us to do a very targeted and specific ordinance amendment around this particular issue?
Awesome.
I think maybe, you know, maybe that would be the right thing, but I think this is a perfect example of something that could be a whole. Rabbit's nest of whatever. Um, and that we still haven't. We started this proposal process. We got some relatively good proposals. Um, it would be good to get. Uh, the new board, um, if this is all driven by the the tannery, then.
Yep.
Um, we should really decide whether or not we're going to finish what we started. Um, my preference before we go asking people if they want to change the zoning would be just to send out a proposal. That people could vote down if um, that complies with the zoning and it wouldn't need to even have a select word endorsement, but it would just be an opportunity to say. Hey Camden, we found this is the very best we could do in terms of a proposal for the tannery that actually complies with the zoning. Um, if you, you know, if you vote for this, then every, then 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 great, then we have our answer. But if you vote against it, then that would, you know, that would finally be the concrete thing that we could point to where we would say. It doesn't work the way it is. So now we ask to change the zoning. It just would be.
Correct.
Cleaner because the River Business District, um, that protection against having residential on the first floor. I do think has served us well in some cases. Um. So I don't know. I just think that's a larger conversation that.
I kind of share your comment here, but Jeremy, quick.
Yeah, just quickly, it's not, there's not a prohibition of the residential on the first floor. It just requires that there's an equal amount of commercial space on the first floor. So.
Whatever, whatever it is.
Right, I'm just trying to clarify because we're not prohibition and that's why.
Hold on, what? No, that's, that's what the, is there currently?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. Yes.
So you can have some residential on the first floor as long as there's.
It's gotta be equivalent square footage, correct? Yeah.
All right.
How do I not know that?
I'm a little caught up based too because I thought the whole discussion about the, you know, like Northland and whatever.
Well, Northland had no commercial space on the first floor. Habitat had no commercial space on the first floor.
But uh, when we contemplated two different uses of for the crane sport. Um, that there was a ratio there, but it wasn't the correct ratio, is that correct?
We didn't know what that ratio was, Bob, to be honest.
Well, I I think, I think too, but to. Um, maybe a chicken and egg thing going on in my mind here too. I think it's very important, by the way, but I think it's more. I I, you know, I've heard comments from other than the River District about residents in the first floor kind of thing, but um. But but then behind my my mind, I keep going back to maybe I'm wrong, Audrey, Jeremy, but. Uh, just to make sure we don't, don't jump onto that loading the camel up. Before we finish loading it up in July when we have a priorities meeting. Um, this seems like a chicken and egg to me. It's the tannery thing driving uh what they might want to do here or other parts of the town. Regarding doing this order. I think it's important to do so. Absolutely think it's important to do so. Just whether it's a priority right now, like the parking is, I don't hold it quite as high.
I mean, I would agree, Bob. I wouldn't, from all the, I think it's a different issue and it's a different level of priority. A lot has to do with, you know, um, what the new board choose to do in terms of the tannery and how you progress that.
Exactly, exactly. And hopefully it will become an issue because we want to do something there, but that's just the way I feel about it right now. It's not the same level of the parking thing, which is right in our face. Um, with that, then we do have one more uh road opening ordinance with, I think. I believe we want Dave uh for this one too, uh, but please, Allison. Um, and but Audrey, you can introduce if you want to, we'll wait for you to bring him in if you would like to.
Yeah, so I I think that all of you remember around the time when um the gas company was talking about expand or moving. Or bringing their services to the mid coast. Um, you know, we, we talked about the need to really sort of tighten up our road opening ordinance. And I mean, that was, that was kind of what spurred this discussion, but really this is something that we've needed for quite a while because. You know, we have other utilities that um, you know, need to open up our right of way and we have private contractors that. Need to open up our roads for whatever reason. So I think that. You know, this is really important for protecting our investment and just making sure that. Um, you know, we're really incentivizing people to coordinate or the different entities that, you know, do this work to coordinate us better.
For for street.
Dave is, sorry, what's that?
Street utilities, right?
Yeah, I mean, utilities is a, the primary example, but they're also private contractors as well. Um, and Dave has written one of these before when he was at the city of Rockland. Um, and so I asked him to, you know, do something similar for Camden and uh he came up with a draft of. Of it, which is in your packet. And I would say that um, this is kind of one of those issues that. I I do think has a level of urgency to it. Um, because. You know, there's just been a tremendous amount of investment in our roads over the past. You know, year and that's, that's only going to sort of.
Yep.
You know, be compounded by things like when we uh look at redeveloping Pearl Street and, you know, all the planning work that we want to do for complete streets and, you know. I I think it's just really important. It's not just the the travel lanes, it's also the sidewalks. Um, so. Anyway, I'll let Dave go into the details, but I think that, you know, it's protecting our investment. That's the long and short of it.
Put it in the same category as needing to go to a special town meeting sometime soon.
I think so.
Yeah, Dave, why don't you talk a little bit about, um, just from my perspective, by the way, I've never seen a town that doesn't have one of these ordinances.
I was gonna say, this is a pretty basic thing that you, you, every town should have to protect their investment from, you know, what, whatever. Um, right now, anybody could dig in the street and there's no recourse really the town has. Um, this, this ordinance, some of the, some of the. Higher points of this ordinance and is it, it stipulates um a guarantee for workmanship for three year period. It it ties in the requirements of um, you know, permit fees for openings. It um gives the select board some latitude with infractions of stormwater it violations. It. Um. It sets the standards for reconstruction and and subgrade materials and paving thicknesses and standards that are. Adopted by the M D O T. It gives meets and bounds of where. Curb cuts and not curb cuts, but where trench cuts and it need to be uh replaced and how far back on the pavement that has to be cut. And how far back on the sub base it needs to be cut. It it um. It it pretty much covers everything. It has a bonding requirement for work. Um, so that, you know, if work is done, there's a bond that's held for a three year period and then sub, subpar work, the bond is pulled. If the contractor doesn't redo the work and the town will do it. It's really just a big, big protection type of thing for any work done within the roadway. So you know how much money we spend on roads and I mean, this is kind of an insurance policy for um roads and sidewalks.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, interesting that we don't have this. Um, and I I'm curious, how many other places do or do not have it? I mean, it's, it's.
Well, I mean, Rockland didn't have one and then then they did, you know, I mean, and and what generated the one in Rockland was. Um. Subpar uh uh trench cuts from utilities uh crossing uh the road and people would be just furious because. These, you know, road would get paved and then. Um, you know, a year later, they would go in and do a trench cut all the way across the road and do it every twenty feet. And you'd be going boom, 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 you know, so every, every time you drove by work to Hanaford, you were hitting this. Series of bumps and it just infuriated people. And they're like, we want to do something. We want to protect our roads and that that's kind of what really spurred that in Rockland. Um, but it really, it was tough when I first instituted it because. You have a lot of smaller contractors.
Yep.
And and they're really the ones that don't have the capital to do these fixes if the, if the workmanship isn't done right. And um it kind of weeded some of those people out. I mean, that's not always a good thing, but it kind of weeded some of those people out. It was hard to kind of get people on the bandwagon for the bonding requirements. But in the end, after a year, when everybody knew that that's what you had to do. Everybody did it and that was kind of how it how it worked and the the workmanship and went up. And I mean, got a lot better because if you know. That they're holding your money for three years on a, on a, you know, on a twenty thousand dollar job. You're going to make sure you compact all of that. You're going to make sure you put it together right because you don't want to come back and redo it. And. That's really where the rubber hits the road. Like an example, like stormwater requirements. So, you know, you go in, a contractor comes in and they neglect. To, you know, put in catch basin filters, boom stock, you know, uh erosion control, prac, you know, BMPs. And then you have a serious, you know, problem. You have no real recourse. I mean, you, you mean, you can kind of give them a fine, maybe within some of the other ordinances, but this. Stiffens that up and makes it a requirement so that when I'm going out. I can say, hey, look, the ordinance says you need to do this, you're not doing it. And there's a fine in there if you don't do it. So. Um, I hate to say that the, you know, the carrot and the stick is 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 sometimes what you use, but this is the stick.
Yeah, it is a good stick. By the way, just one second, Mark. I, I think that a lot of contractors, especially small ones, Blanchard, the performance bond thing too, because it's another. Chunk of change they have to rule out and but your, your amount you've got in here is actually on of my experience on the low side, but what kind of work we do is probably reasonable. Mark.
I was gonna say, it, it's very important. I'm just curious how it's going to affect uh the future for bidding for for projects. You know, because we have a tough time finding people now sometimes to find stuff. Is it going to get tougher?
It, Mark, it really doesn't affect um our work because the the town's exempt from the 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 this ordinance because we have to follow it anyway. And our work is generally bonded or or insured for a period of time after the work is done. Um, we can require our contractors to abide by the terms of the road opening permit, but there's a stipulation in there that exempts town work.
I don't mean for the town. I mean, are you going to have trouble finding people to bid on projects you need them to bid on?
You mean privately?
Privately, yes.
Um, that is, you know, that, that. What it will do is if you have a person that has a very small operation. He may just say, I don't want to mess around with this bonding. Because it's, it's going to add, you know, cost to my job. Which translates back into the cost to the consumer who's the person doing the work. That is, that is a component of it. But what I found was as we kind of. I navigated through this in Rockland. We found that, you know, there were several agencies out there that made it really easy to set up these. Project bonding requirements, like the cross agency and they would just, you would just, you would, you know, reference those people. When they came in and said, what's this bonding thing? Why do I have to do this? And you say, go see Chuck over at the cross agency and he'll set you up. Um, that, that was kind of how it worked. So you can run without it. This is, this is just something I was asked to put together. Um, but you know, think about what had to happen without it in the gas company would have come in here.
Right.
You would have had no real. You know.
It makes a lot of sense.
Allison.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think um, a lot of this is going to be like the, I mean, the water company is the main one that we're. Is that act, I mean, some places it's, it's different because you might have, um, you know, the municipality, we can work together. The public works department can work with the sewer department. And we work really hard to go through these planning exercises where we say, okay, well, this is the road. That needs to be done. And so we get all of our ducks in a row and we plan to do projects at the same time. And that is really good for residents because you're only disrupting that area um. Once, but when, you know. It's, you know, it's not always the water company, but that is going to be um. A, a big one. We have private utilities that don't have that same built in incentive to do a lot of planning ahead of time with the town. You kind of have to put an incentive system in, I would assume. Um. So it's, I mean, it's best if we can all really work together and only open the roads once and then. Not have to do all this, but if they want to go in and I, you know, I never really thought about this before. Um, all of seeing all the money that goes into it, that just the ability to just go up and dig up a town road with all of these things. Um, I mean, it's a really big deal and there have, there, there's got to be some kind of rule.
Yes. Um, to that end, um, pardon Jeremy, is this draft ordinance, what's the process we have to go through to get this to a, a town meeting?
It's just. I mean, it's, it's simpler than like a zoning ordinance amendment, um, because it doesn't need to go to the planning board. Um, so it's, you know, the, your regular process, you have to have the two hearings to put it on the, um, you know, warrant and setting a date. Special town meeting.
Take this special town meeting. So this is going to be the easiest one of what we discussed so far to get to the finish line.
Absolutely.
That's my point. So I don't think there's any reason, from my perspective, this shouldn't be a priority to get it done. It's kind of low hanging fruit. And like I said, I, I don't think I've worked in any of the twenty five states and many cities and I've never seen not have one of these. And but usually it was a higher than twenty five thousand dollar performance.
Very special, Bob.
No, it's just, it's just what it is and no, no criticism.
Bob, you know, those numbers in there are, you know, the the first crack at it, you know, there's. The, the application, actually, you could raise the amount.
Yeah.
Where, where the bonding would be required to make it a little easier on, on somebody that's a smaller contractor and. So if it's a job that's ten thousand dollars, let's say, you wouldn't require, you know, the same type of level of bonding, but. Um, you know, one of the big caveats to this is that you, 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 you're putting, you put a moratorium on, you know. Um, big investments so that somebody, you know, is going to be a little bit more vigilant on, you know, taking care of their private utility. Um, and then instead of waiting until you just spent a million dollars on a road. And then they say, oh, well, my store is bad. I'm going to cut into it now. And they, they go and make a trench cut on this, this really big investment you just made. It, it basically says if you're going to cut into a brand new road like that within a, within the moratorium. You're going to do a twenty, you're going to go from, you're going to go twenty feet to each side of this curb to curb, curb to curb, and that kind of discourages that, you know.
Yes, when I use the term low hanging fruit, I didn't mean that was low hanging. I meant, I mean, it's, we can get it to the finish line faster. That's.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Great, great job of Dave as usual. Thank you so much.
No, and I, and I look forward to any of your feedback on that. So take a look at it, you know, I mean.
Well, I think it's great.
People that look at these things, the better off it is.
Yeah, I agree. No, it's, it's great. I did read it and it's well done. Um, so with that, thank you, David.
You got it.
Well, yeah, that's another one to put on the checklist that we don't have to do a heck of a lot with, but take it through the select board to get it to a town meeting whenever we have that town meeting. Um, with that, I think we've, um, other than, um, the agenda. But we did have just, just, uh, some financials that were in our packet, just to, I did take a look at them. And, um, Audrey, the, the town's finances look great. Um, they're doing a great job of managing, in fact, it's, um. You know, we've gone through this whole year of a virus thing and without a bump. In fact, it's probably better than it was a year ago. Uh, from my perspective, there's very little in it that's even worth discussing as far as being an issue or, or any budgetary line items that look like they're in trouble.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree with you. It's, um, you know, for a year of uncertainty, weathering pretty well.
And revenues are up, expenses in control, you can't ask for more. Anyway, any other comments, uh, select board, or I'll turn to Mr. Rettner for his very famous adjournment motion.
Actually, I do.
One more we're gonna discuss, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. There was one more item that, um, I think Alison mentioned she wanted to bring up.
Are we not gonna have select board reports in?
Sure.
That's.
It wasn't, this, we'll do it. Alison, go ahead, you volunteered.
How about let Mark go first?
Oh, no, you volunteered. No, I'm calling, Mark, go ahead.
My, mine's, mine's just a question of, of Audra, is I don't know the answer. Do you know who, uh, designs the swimming lanes for like Barrett's Cove? Who puts out the posts and the, and the, the floats and stuff to separate the swimming lane from the rest of the, uh?
I do not.
Because I, I happened to go to Barrett's Cove, we were doing rescue training, uh, at the cliffs near Barrett's Cove on Sunday morning. And I drove by Barrett's Cove and they put out the dock and, and, and the swimming lanes. And the swimming lanes have been reduced tremendously. They've cut the amount of space open and it's not, I don't think it's appropriate at all. There's usually a lot of people using that space and they really cut back, uh, what's available in those lanes for swimmers. They, they've made it shorter and they made it much thinner. And I don't think it's appropriate at all. So, if we can investigate and find out how that was designed the way it was, because I don't think it's appropriate.
Point, Mark.
I'm looking to that.
Anything else, Mark?
No.
Alison.
Um, that also reminded me that, um, we have discussed before having the, I think it's called a, a, the lake warden. Or the inland harbor master or we, um, are supposed to maybe get an update on how that all went. Or have a, a future meeting, but also, um, quickly, I'm just gonna share my screen really quick. Um, and while I'm doing that, though, the, the thing that I was gonna bring up before was, um. I had promised a couple people actually to ask about handicap accessibility at the snowball. Um, the, in, with the, when some people saw the discussion about how to use surplus funds. Um, it was brought up that it, you know, it's still totally impossible for somebody in a wheelchair to get up to the rental. Area, um, or, you know, to get up to really any of the area of the snowball. And that, you know, buying some kind of a ramp system would be great if we could look into what it would take to make that more handicapped. Accessible. Um, and honestly, I feel kind of bad. It's not something I had thought of on my own. Um, and then just, just really quickly, I wanted to, um, share, it's this sort of special time of year when fish are migrating. Um, it's one of the greatest tourist attractions around the state of Maine. Um, A O Y's in particular are, um, in abundance right now, the ones trying to come from the ocean to get up into. Um, through the streams and into lakes in order to spawn and then they go back out. Um, they are in Camden as well. It's not very easy to see many of them. But, um, these are just some photographs that I got, um, just the other day in Camden. They're trying very hard. Um, they're not, we don't have any fish passage yet. Um, but, um, it's pretty cool. And it's a really great opportunity right now to go, um, to some of the places around the state that do have active fish runs. Um, this is, um, Turner Falls and like probably the closest place that you could go to really see, um, a, a very natural stream. Um, would be Turner Falls, um, and whoops, um, in Lincolnville, that's right off of Tango Wood. And, um, this actually looks a lot like what you might expect. Portions of McGonagook to look like right in the harbor, sort of a natural falls. And it's really amazing to see the fish fighting. Uh, they, like, they, they come flying out of the air. Um, they, you know, there're just so, so many of them. I was there with a bunch of kids this afternoon and just the shrieks of delight. There's really nothing like it. So, um, in the next week or so, if anybody gets a chance to, to go there, it would be. I promise you, you won't regret it. Um, another one would be to see like a fish ladder, um, would be. Um, let's stop sharing, um, would be, Dammer Scott of Mills is another really cool place to go. Just to see thousands of fish fighting against the, the current. It's, it's really a spectacular tourist attraction. And, um, might help people envision what could happen in Camden someday.
Thanks, Alison. Taylor, is you still there?
I am, I don't have a report tonight.
Okay, um, minor report, um, to add to your traffic woes, Audrey, I've got a sneaking suspicion if I read the markings on Route One North. And D O T is gonna do a repaving job there, which is gonna cause traffic issues for a few weeks. If, if I can read the markings correctly, but they need to do it. It's a three quarter inch coating they'll be doing out there. But, in any event, other than that, nothing. Um, Mark?
I have a motion.
No.
Motion, yeah, I know. I make a motion, we adjourn the select board and reconvene on June first for our last meeting with Mr. Benzie. And Ms. Lookner.
Second.
Motion, Dave, the seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Alison?
Hi.
Hi.
Bob, I, four zero. Thank you, thank you, Audrey, thank you, Jeremy and then Dave and the whole gang. Um, got through a lot in three hours, actually, I thought would take longer.
Hmm.
Yeah, but good job. So on to a bunch of stuff for June first, um, and onward and upward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.